Jess Robison.
Here.
Christina Montemayo.
Yeah.
Ross Krebs.
Here.
Ben Bonfoc.
Here.
Chris Hasling.
Here.
Colin Laird. Erica Sparhawk.
Erica, both of you know they're traveling, you've been able to send the night, Erica, make me dial in. First item on the agenda, and then we'll jump back to students of the month. We see those folks come in is consent agenda, which consists of accounts payable. Sales tax report noting a 20% increase so far in your today's sales. It's great to see. Liquor license renewals for Cox liquor, downtown liquors on Main, Beijing Tokyo, Soho liquor and wine and Thunder River Theater. Special event liquor license for Colorado Mountain College for wine tasting classes. Modification of premises for on-street dining to have their decks, which is great to see going out that Alabria in Odeon. Any comments or?
I can make a motion to pass the consent.
One second then.
One second.
All right. Push it by Chris, second by Jess, all of their way up. You opposed, pushing passes and yes. All right, so let's jump back to the. All right, first student of the month, Sean, pass more, hold up Sean. Stand right here, standing right here. I'm gonna read a little bit about you, okay? This says Sean is an intelligent, creative, helpful first grader at Crystal River. He has a desire to learn, grow his knowledge base, which can be seen through the frequency and types of questions. Do you like answering lots of questions? All right. Sean enjoys helping out his classmates and teachers whenever he has the chance. He is quick to say, do you need help, or I can help you with that when he sees a friend or teacher in need. We are lucky to have Sean as part of the CRES community. Can I shake your hand? Congratulations. Our other student of the month is Urban Quintana. Get that perfect. A kindergartner at Crystal River. Okay, next item is persons present not on the agenda, which a lot of people are here for that. Way we do this is the town clerk will call your name. And you can come up to the podium, please address your comments to me. This is not interactive, you don't need to applaud. Just address your comments to me as chair of this board. We'll give each person three minutes, letting you know when your time is up. Please be respectful of our public process and the important business that we have to do here tonight. Really appreciate it if your comments are about local issues under our control, and if you're a town car and help resident. That's, that's really the purpose of this time. We understand this, and a lot of times people use it for their general search and issue that they need a forum for. So we'll get started. Let's go to you, call.
Mickey Dawson from H Friendly Carbondale.
Nikki and Sue are grabbing on my.
Welcome to all the new trustees. We, I'm gonna be very, very brief, this is a local issue. We saw on the agenda that when Lauren is going to present items that are being reviewed, as she does every quarterly, that the item of the roundabout on Industry Way is there, and it is in planning and engineering, which I'm not quite sure what that means, except that they're probably reviewing it. So this is more for the new trustees, just to let you know that the roundabout at Industry Way was the first time we noticed it was in H Friendly. Carbondale was in the 2013 access control plan, so we're talking about something that was designed and thought about 11 years ago. A lot has happened in the town of Carbondale since the first thinking about where to put that roundabout. And so I'm here really just to tell you that we, H Friendly Carbondale, and of course MAP, MAP project has looked at what intersectings along 133 and just kind of lighting a light bulb in your brain so that when we get to presenting all of that information, the fact that it's in engineering and planning, that you can take a deep breath and hear all of the new information and all the survey data that we have collected over the last year. Thank you.
Sue's this list.
Hi, I also am from Carbondale and also here for in Carbondale. With a little heads up about the Industry Way proposed roundabout. And same in our, after we are survey, and we reviewed all of the previous studies that were done about future development along 133. We realized with shock, actually, that none of the previous studies had taken into consideration the needs of people with mobility challenges. There were, there was no mention, no acknowledgement that people for with disabilities might have a vested interest in how that goes. And we're, after we, after meeting with people in the community who do have mobility challenges, we are very aware now that that a roundabout at Industry really may not solve a lot of the accessibility problems for our population with mobility challenges. And we may have some ADA challenges, some non-compliance issues to deal with. We don't address that in our upcoming development. Thank you.
Susan Ray.
The third of us, I think to be 133 study. So decade or so ago, when it was recommended that there be a roundabout at Industry Way, the intention was to get traffic, truck traffic off of that industry area Merrill and get that off of town, get that off of A, get that over to 133 more quickly. And although a lot has been done in 11 years, there is still no roundabout. There was still no cut through town block of property at the corner of 18 Merrill. We apparently have an agreement with Raptor to cut through their property to make that. But when you start looking at the jaywalking, including wheeler jaywalking that happens at City Market, Industry Way no longer makes sense. It makes sense for promoting vehicle traffic getting out of the industry park, but it's not promote pedestrian, bicycles and vulnerable users getting around, getting in and out from the east and west side of City Market onto 130 or 3, across 133. We were astonished, and the CDOT representative region three representative was astonished that we have wheelchair, people who use wheelchairs. They call themselves wheelers, it's a little African, so we can call them that too. That wheelers jaywalk at City Market at that intersection. Now, they go there at times when they think they're gonna be safe, it's not a lot of traffic, but it's still pretty ridiculous. And so in our report, we're going to be recommending a roundabout in usland. And when I saw when we presented our report to VVT a week ago, and we said some of this, we could see Kevin Shoresman fighting language, he's not terribly happy. And I understand he's been working a lot, but things have changed in the last decade. And we think that we, before we split good many after bad, we really reconsider where we recommend a roundabout goes on 133. So we will be presenting our report to, you know, not anymore, I'm depending on somebody next week, and then when we can come and present another version of our report to you guys in June.
Trevor Cannon. Trevor, before you start, what is your street address?
147 Calico Bridge.
Thank you.
Drive just outside of Carbondale. Hey Ben, if you'll let me know when, I've got like 30 seconds left, just sort of run on. So I'm here to talk about the Royport Pickleball Association. Just some stats on pickleball. These are the most conservative stats I could find online, and pickleball has superseded soccer. It's superseded downhill student in participation in the United States. Now, there are plenty of stats that show that participation is three times that high, up into 35 to 40 million, but we'll go with the lowest one I can find, 14 million. It's here to stay, I guess is my point. It is accessible to all ages, from the age of eight to 80. If you've been out to pickleball court, you know what that looks like. It's very soldierable. As the president, I've said this and I've felt this, I think this is, you're gonna laugh, pickleball can save the world. You see people every single day out there, completely different face, different beliefs, different signs in their yard, playing a game and enjoying each other's company and saying, congratulations, that was, that was great. I mean, it really is that kind of social. Every game is about 13 to 15 minutes long, you're not committing a lifetime to this person. But you are engaging in a way that I think is, I don't know, it's like nothing I've ever been a part of, and I've been a part of sports all my life, so. The Royport Pickleball Association currently has 550 members, most of them live in Carbondale. We are obviously, by the way, the emails and the joining are coming in, we're gonna be well over 600, maybe 700 this year. And then there, in addition to that, there are hundreds of people that are not members, but that play on a regular basis, right down the street, so. Sales tax revenue, pickleball. There, I'm a destination pickleball player, and there are hundreds of people. I mean, I go to tournaments, I go to Bogosa Springs, I go to Telluride, I go to places. I mean, it's beautiful, right, but I still play, I go there to play pickleball, because I know they have a great community. People come here for that. It's a sales trip, sales tax revenue driver. Our, a local shop in town, Independence Run High, I was just talking to Brian, they started Jerry and Pickleball. His first order, they sold out in like a week. He's trying, he's gonna order triple that the next time.
Yep, 30 seconds.
30 seconds, okay, I'll, I mean, all right, so, three courts approved. I'm asking to be on the agenda, because we need about $100,000 to get us there. We've raised 200,000, we need $100,000 in the general fund. We've been shut down by Parks and Rec, they have their hands full, I get it. And that's my ask, just to be on the agenda soon with you guys, welcome newborn trustee members. Thanks y'all, appreciate it, thanks sir.
Thanks Trevor. And three minutes. We'll discuss if your trustee comments, if there's anything that comes up that you'd like to add to the agenda, so you'll have the opportunity to then and it takes some reading. Okay, this is.
Dan Bullock.
Hi, Dan Bullock, Carbondale Tree Board. On March 21st and March 22nd, February 14th, there were two letters from the tree board to the board of trustees concerning the trees at the new swimming pool. Also, the comments from our town arborists about the trees at the swimming pool. We believe that these memos that we sent there are the correct way to move on the trees at the pool. We've heard some comments back that we should face this here. This is the phase in these recommendations. You can't wait. If you wait, 10 years from now, you're gonna lose, I think. This is the time to do it. We have some people, there are a couple of groups that are interested in donating funds for tree scapeing at the pool. One would be Colorado Tree Coalition, which the town flies, that tree board would apply to, or town harvest would apply to. It's not a great amount of money, but it's probably up to 2,500 to $5,000. There's another, we can go to Excel Energy, they have money that they have donated to the town in the past in excess of $6,000 about four or five years ago. There's another group that they want me to contact them. They gave me a lot of gratitude, they said, oh, how much do you need, and they gave me a large number. Don't get everybody excited about that. I think this is really important that we look at these considerations, these recommendations from our town arborists and from the tree board. And one reason to say that is because, as we all know by ordinance, the tree board is the advisory board that supports trustees on all things concerning trees in the county. I would also say, if there's any other meetings with parks and PMZ, that the tree board should be on the agenda for those, for those meetings to reiterate what these recommendations are. That's it.
Thanks Dan.
Thank you.
Brittany Stone.
Danny. First, thank you all for your time and willingness to represent government for that. Somebody Colin mentioned last month that a trustee, we did, and stuck with it. He wondered if this is the best platform to raise the issue of a ceasefire injustice. I think we can all agree that the town of Carbondale is not the ideal platform for this issue. I think however, a more helpful question is, is this an appropriate and worthwhile platform? For me, a ceasefire resolution is definitely both appropriate and worthwhile for the town of Carbondale to pass. First, over 100 communities across the US, both larger and smaller than Carbondale, have taken the steps to consider and pass similar resolutions. This precedent shows that it clearly is a reasonable discussion for our on-board to engage in as well. Second, many human rights organizations, including the United Nations, report that the situation in Gaza is at the very least of political tense. A whole-blown famine is happening in some areas, and an immediate ceasefire is the only hope. Being aware of this information morally requires us to use whatever voice, whatever platform available to us, no matter how small, to persuade our federal government to change course and demand an end to the violence that is being enacted on over 1 million innocent people, especially children. As far as the effectiveness of a ceasefire resolution, it provides a concrete example of hope. I recently heard an interview with a Palestinian woman who declared that what helps her continue to go on despite the terrible, terrible current circumstances, is hearing reports of growing calls for a ceasefire from American citizens and communities. Carbondale can be one more voice in the growing collective demanding a ceasefire to save lives. Increasing pressure on those with power to enact the change. There's no doubt this pressure is already having the back. The main argument I heard to this board not exploring the idea of a ceasefire is the desire to focus on local issues. For better or worse, that rationale continues to lose validity as we ceasefire advocates are here again, taking up time focusing on an international issue. I understand the desire to prioritize local issues. I also believe this opportunity to stand up for the dignity of all human life is well worth the small amount of time it requires. I also understand that trustees are hesitant to pass such a resolution without hearing from a diverse group of constituents. I agree, and urge the boards to reach out, gather input from a wide variety of people, have discussions, research the issue from independent international sources. As a Jew in support of a ceasefire, I feel an obligation to my heritage to advocate for an end to the persecution of the people. Please remember this when you hear other Jewish voices expressing their individual opinions, claiming to represent the Jewish community. Finally, I want to offer a reminder, call for a ceasefire is not a political statement, it's not picking sides, it is in no way anti-Semitic. It's a humanitarian plea, employing everyone with power in this situation to agree to a ceasefire. Save lives, keep everyone, Palestinians and Jews safer. It's the least worth a discussion. Thanks.
Christina Flores.
Hello, thank you for your time. I echo my colleague's sentiments, and I just give a brief reminder that on Tuesday, April 23rd, I came before the board to share the story of my good friend Qosai and his fundraising campaign to evacuate his three cousins from Rafah so that they may reunite with their mother in Egypt, who was able to evacuate in March to seek breast cancer treatment. I come before you again to share updates on my friend's story in an effort to make human and local what continues to be referred to as a nebulous, cruel international affair. I will just start by sharing that on April 23rd, I shared the fundraising campaign with my network here in Carbondale, and within 24 hours, had raised $1,020 in contributions towards the evacuation. Point being, Carbondale residents care. On Saturday, April 27th, I had raised a total of $3,000 of funds for Qosai's family, which included an additional $1,125 from Carbondale residents. Qosai texted me, I haven't been this hopeful in so long, seeing how many of my chosen family are coming together to help and support, has reminded me of the power and the kindness of people and humanity. It takes a village, as they say. The week of April 28th through May 5th, I continued to fundraise, I continued to thank Qosai and his cousins and his aunt and all of his family in Gaza and occupied West Bank. I did not hear from my friend that week. On Monday, May 6th, Qosai sent me a message apologizing for being out of touch, followed by the message, quote, "The past 24 hours have been very draining and stressful, non-stop carpet bombing in east of Rafah city. Inshallah my cousins will be out soon. The Rafah crossing where they need to be in order to leave to Egypt is in the east, so I hope they make it. Imagine after this, they don't." Qosai also shares that we have raised enough money for his cousins to be put on the evacuation list. He says, in a hopeful tone, quote, "At this pace, and if the invasion of Rafah doesn't happen, maybe they can leave by Thursday." Thursday, May 7th, Israeli military forces take control of the Rafah border crossing. I know this means that Qosai's cousins will not make it out by Thursday after all. Wednesday, May 8th, it's Qosai's birthday. I walk through Rio Grande Trail, and I think of him. I send him a video of the leaves sprouting and the river flowing. I wish so desperately that it will take his mind off of the worry. I don't care for Qosai for the rest of the week. Today, Tuesday, May 8th, Qosai sent the following message, quote. That's it?
Yep, that's it.
Kyle Watts. Sorry, and the next nine people have not filled out their address or indicated whether or not they are town residents.
I'm Dylan, this is Kyle Watts.
Your address would be preferred.
482 Mesa Verde Avenue, Carbondale, Boga. Yeah, thank you guys for having this forum and this type of discussion. I've never taken advantage before, but glad to be here. All right, I wanted to address the fact that you guys have an issue with just simply bugging on it. It seems like that's either an excuse, or it's not really the reason why. I mean, I know it's a divisive issue, and it takes guts to vote on something like that. Especially if you're an elected official, you depend on your constituents for your position. But I'm just asking that you guys, or you take a stand on taking a stand. Not, I'm not even asking you to vote either way, just to have a vote. And I've been collecting signatures for this petition for the past week and a half, and whether or not the people signed our petition or not, they cared about. And those are people in this valley, all, most of them from Carbondale. And yeah, some people didn't want to sign it, and some people did, but hundreds of people I talked to, just in two, three separate occasions, they all had an opinion. And to argue it has no merit in our valley, just simply based on geography, shows how isolated we really are. I mean, I grew up here, I grew up in Carbondale mostly, and people always say, oh, you live in a bubble, you know? It's just like a fantasy world. And the fact that we won't even, at a, at a, at a leadership level, we won't even agree to vote on outside issues, just shows how isolated we really are. I just think geography shouldn't be the only thing to, geography shouldn't be the only deciding factor as to whether or not it's considered a local issue. Because if it's affecting our local people, I think that qualifies as a local issue. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Tracy Zabel.
My address is 3460 Christopher Stride.
Thank you.
Could everyone who's here in support of this ceasefire resolution please stand or raise your hand? Thank you. We're here again to ask you to consider putting on the agenda, consider your resolution to call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. You may hold the belief that this is not a local issue. But I am your constituent, no matter to me, these are your constituents, no matter to them. As Kyle said, we've been petitioning, we've recently received over 400, 488 signatures, 324 of them in Carbondale in support of ceasefire resolution, and just so we can have, people care. And as we were in the community getting signatures, we had to go back to flyers as we ran out of space. The current situation in Gaza is beyond catastrophic, and all of us in this room are complicit. Our collective lack of action, lack of empathy, lack of awareness of our own biases, and lack of power in a democracy are to blame. It's hard to conceptualize over 2 million people suffering, tens of thousands dead, especially from the comfort of our lives here in Carbondale. I recently learned of a young couple sheltering in a tent with their six-month-old baby. They take turns at night, staying awake so that when the bombs are falling and the baby is scared, he's not alone. And if they die, he's not alone. Imagine bombs in a tent. They've recently had to evacuate to Rafah, or from Rafah, to the middle of Gaza, where Israel continues to bomb indiscriminately, as is occurring throughout the entire strip. There is no safe space in Gaza. Many are surviving on around 200 calories a day, and right now the border is closed, so no food, no aid, no medical supplies, no clean water, making it in. Without a ceasefire, mass casualties are imminent. If you cannot put yourself in the shoes of the people in Gaza who've been dealing with this for over seven months, I want you to think deeply and critically into why that is. I'm so tired of hearing that the situation is complicated. Calling for a ceasefire to ensure the preservation of life is not complicated. What is complicated is trying to understand why the United States is continuing to use our tax dollars to embolden another country who's blatantly and repeatedly committing war crimes. The United States gaslights us in their press conferences. Additionally, the United States is not even in compliance with its own laws, for example, the LACIL laws, which prohibits the United States from providing military assistance to anyone violating human rights. This is as much the United States disregarding humanity as it is Israel's, and as US citizens, we feel it is our duty to use all avenues we can to demand that this man stop. Personally, in 2014, I had the opportunity to visit the DeKalb concentration camp. Many who were interned and killed at DeKalb were political opponents to the Nazi regime. My husband and I are both of German descent, we saw many of shared names on the list of people who died. I wondered if those were my ancestors, I prayed that if I was alive then, I would have done the right thing. We are alive now, we have the opportunity to do the right thing now. I know in my bones that demanding a ceasefire is going to be on the right side of history, we're asking you to join us. If we only get a short time on this earth, we might as well live with moral courage, never again speaks never again for anyone, thank you.
Jessica Richardson.
Thank you, my address is 151 Richard Lane in Lemon Springs. We wanted to present you with an example of what a ceasefire resolution could look like. This is the example we have given at few meetings, although the statistics have been updated. As since your last meeting, 1,705 people have been killed in Gaza. 500 of them were children. We know that this issue is uncomfortable, and we know that we are asking you to do something far outside the scope of your normal role. We also know that each and every one of us has the moral obligation to do whatever we can to end the genocide being funded by our tax dollars. Your platform is not powerless, and we encourage you to hear this resolution and consider passing it. Resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza and the occupied West Bank, immediate and unhindered humanitarian aid into Gaza, and a release of all Israeli and Palestinian hostages and arbitrarily detained civilians. One, whereas the city of Carbondale recognizes that all lives are precious, that Palestinian and Israeli lives have the same value, that innocent civilians should never be collateral damage, and that the targeting of civilians, no matter what their faith or ethnicity, is a violation of international humanitarian law. And two, whereas international organizations, including but not limited to Amnesty International, the Human, the United Nations, the World Health Organization, the International Rescue Committee, and many others have made a call for a permanent. The International Rescue Committee and many others have made a call for a permanent ceasefire. In order to prevent the further loss of innocent civilian lives, and to be in accordance with international humanitarian law. And three, whereas on October seventh, an estimated one thousand one hundred and thirty nine Israeli civilians were killed. And two hundred and fifty people were taken hostage, and since October seventh. Over thirty five thousand nine hundred and one Palestinians in Gaza, including fifteen thousand children. Nine hun, nine thousand eight hundred and ninety three women have been killed. And over seventy eight thousand Palestinians have been injured, with at least ten thousand people, including four thousand four hundred children still trapped under the rubble. Ten thousand and twenty two children are left without fathers, and eight thousand three hundred and fifty two children have been left without their mothers. Four, whereas civilian infrastructure must be protected in accordance with international law. And based on the same standards that all countries are bound to comply with according to the Geneva Convention. However, Israeli airstrikes have led to the widespread damage and destruction of seventy percent civilian infrastructure in Gaza. Including three hundred sixty thousand homes, four hundred and fourteen educational facilities, two hundred and sixty seven places of worship. Including one of the world's oldest churches, one hundred and fifty five health facilities, one hundred and thirty ambulances, fifty three healthcare centers. Thirty two hospitals.
Willow Pashman?
Hi. Five, whereas the destruction of civilian infrastructure has led to the internal displacement of over two, two million Palestinians within the Gaza Strip. And six, whereas millions of lives in Gaza are in, are at imminent risk. Due to displacement, starvation, malnutrition, lack of clean drinking water, diseases, infections, exposure to the elements, and lack of medical care. In addition to continued attacks from the Israeli military if a permanent ceasefire is not immediately enacted by our lawmakers. And humanitarian aid is not delivered without delay. Seven, whereas Israelis, Israel's military attack on Gaza has deliberately targeted journalists, health workers, and United Nations staff. With one hundred and forty two journalists, four hundred and ninety three health workers, and one hundred and ninety one UN workers killed. Leading to the deadliest period for journalists in thirty years. The worst ever total number of attacks on healthcare facilities and the personnel, and the largest loss of life for United Nations staff in the history of the organization. Eight, whereas a rise in settler violence and Israeli Defense, and Israeli Defense Force IDF attacks on the West Bank have simultaneously occurred. With eight hundred and twenty nine reported settler attacks against Palestinians and over four hundred and seventy nine Palestinians killed. Five thousand injured and over nine hundred displaced, displaced in the West Bank since October seventh. Nine, whereas there has been a dramatic rise in the number of Palestinians arbitrarily arrested and detained by the IDF. With eight thousand six hundred and sixty five Palestinians detained sin, since October seventh. For a total of at least nine thousand five hundred Palestinians detained, including over two hundred children and eighteen women, too often held without charge or trial. Ten, whereas to date, ninety four members of Congress and eight senators have called for ceasefire or secession of hostilities in Israel. And occupied Palestinian territories, while our own representative Lauren, Lauren Boebert and our senators Michael Bennett and John Hickenlooper have refused to do so. Ten, whereas at least one hundred cities and counties across the United States, including our neighbors in Glenwood Springs. As well as Oakland, San Francisco, Seattle, Detroit, Atlanta, Richmond, Iowa City, and Dearborn. Among others have approved or are actively considering statements calling for a lasting ceasefire. Twelve, whereas members of our Carbondale community have family and friends who live in Israel, Gaza, and the West Bank and have connections to the region. Thank you.
Hannah Sago? If you can please state your address.
I write my address down after violating Glenwood Springs. Thirteen, whereas Islamophobia, antisemitism, anti-Palestinian, and anti-Arab bigotry have risen significantly across the United States. And around the world since October seventh, with direct impacts on our local communities, from mosques and synagogues to schools, homes. Offices and places where communities gather, as well as at protests and rallies. And fourteen, whereas all these forms of bigotry, violence, and oppression serve to divide our community. And weaken our efforts to achieve collective safety, justice, and true multi-ethnic, multiracial democracy here and everywhere. And fifteen, whereas the enormous and unconditional military aid provided to Israel by the United States every year. Depries Americans of money for their own urgent local needs. Carbondale residents' federal taxes contributed ninety six thousand three hundred and thirty one dollars to Israel's weapons. Which could instead fund, for example, eleven households with public housing for a year. Thirty three children receiving free or low-cost healthcare, one elementary school teacher, or cancel loan debt for three students. Sixteen, whereas the federal government holds immense diplomatic power to save Palestinian and Israeli lives. And local governments play a role in our democracy to urge needed legislative and policy changes at all levels. Now therefore, be it seventeen resolved, that an immediate and permanent ceasefire be enacted by all involved parties. In order to prevent further loss of life, this permanent ceasefire must include Gaza and other areas of the occupied Palestinian territories. Including the West Bank and East Jerusalem, and assault to Israeli military and settler violence. And be it further resolved that the immediate and permanent ceasefire allow for a humanitarian corridor to be immediately opened at the Erez Crossing in the north of the Gaza Strip. And the Karam Shalom border crossing coming from Egypt, for the unrestricted provision of goods to civilians throughout Gaza. Which are indispensable to their survival, as required of the basic human right by international humanitarian law. And that there be unhindered delivery of humanitarian aid, including but not limited to basic supplies for survival such as clean water. Food, fuel, clothes, hygiene, sanitary supplies, access to medical care. And medical supplies, and be it further resolved, that any and all delivery of humanitarian aid be implemented with international oversight. By an independent and impartial body, and be it further resolved, and the immediate and permanent ceasefire must include the release of all Israeli hostages. And Palestinian civilians who are arbitrarily detained and held without charge or due process under administrative detention. By the Israeli government demanding their safety, well-being, and humane treatment in compliance with international law.
Hunter Haynes?
Hunter Haynes, also Glenwood resident, and I'll just encourage you to keep in mind that we're reading this on behalf of nearly. Five hundred people in the valley who already signed our petition for a ceasefire resolution. Twenty one, further resolved, the US funding and military support must never be used in violation of international law. Or to commit human right violations. And be it twenty two, further resolved, that the Carbondale Town Clerk's Office provide a copy of this resolution to the representatives in Colorado State Legislature. And the United States Congressional Delegations from Colorado. And be it twenty three, finally resolved, that the Board of Trustees request town staff to identify and promote community education resources. And services to support Carbondale residents and community members affected by hospital facilities. Including counseling and mental health services, and support groups led by cultural and religious organizations. We hope that having the chance to hear the resolution in its entirety has given you all the chance to understand why organizations like ours are pushing for city and town resolutions. While our state and national office officials fail us. The following sections are from the UN Special Repertory Report, the anatomy of a genocide. We have included them to illustrate how dire the situation is, how urgent the need for action is at all levels. We repeat, you and your platform are not powerless. And we urge you to take part in the movement to end the ongoing genocide in Gaza before it is too late. After five months of military operations, Israel has destroyed Gaza. Over thirty thousand Palestinians have been killed, eighty percent of the whole population is forcibly displaced. Thousands of families have lost loved people, anything like that. Many could not bury and mourn their relatives, forced instead to leave their bodies decomposing in homes, in the street or under the rubble. Thousands have been detained and systematically subjected to inhuman and degrading treatment. The incalculable collective trauma will be experienced for generations to come. The context, facts, and analysis presented in this report lead to the conclusion that there are reasonable grounds to believe that the threshold. Indicating Israel's commission of genocide is met. Thank you.
Bailey Show?
Resident Woody Creek, thank you. The nineteen forty eight Convention of the Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide defines five specific acts against a protected group as elements of a genocide. One, killing members of the group. Since the seventh of October, Israel has killed over thirty thousand Palestinians in Gaza. Equivalent to approximately one point four percent of its population through lethal weapons and deliver imposition of life-threatening conditions. By the end of February, a further twelve thousand Palestinians were reported missing, presumed dead under the rubble. During the first months of the campaign, Israel's army employed over twenty five thousand tons of explosives, equivalent to two nuclear bombs. On innumerable buildings, many of which were identified as targets by artificial intelligence. Israel used unguided munitions or dumb bombs and two thousand pound bunker buster bombs on densely populated areas and safe zones. In the initial weeks, Israeli forces killed around two hundred and fifty people with Bailey, including a hundred children in attacks obliterating entire neighborhoods. And essential infrastructure. Thousands were killed by bombing, sniper fire, or in summary execution. Thousands more were killed while pleading via routes and in areas declared safe by Israel. The victims included a hundred and twenty five journalists and three hundred and forty doctors, nurses, and other health workers. Four percent of Gaza's healthcare personnel, students, academic scientists, and their family members. Seventy percent of recorded deaths have consistently been women and children. Israel failed to prove that the remaining thirty percent, all adult males, were active mosque combatants, a necessary condition for them to be lawfully targeted. By early December, Israel's security advisors claimed the killing of seven thousand terrorists. In a stage of the campaign when less than five thousand adult males in total have been identified among the casualties. Thus implying that every single adult male was a terrorist, and this is indicative of an event, of an intent. To indiscriminately target members of a protective group, assimilating them to active fighter status by default. Moreover, Israel's heightened blockade of Gaza has caused death by starvation, including ten children daily. By impeding access to vital supplies, lack of hygiene overcrowded shelters could cause more deaths than bombings. Sixty eight having created the perfect storm for disease, a quarter of Gaza's population could die from preventable health conditions within a year. Thank you.
Carolyn McBurney?
I live in Glenwood. Causing serious bodily or mental harm to members of a group, Israel's lethal weapons and methods have injured seventy thousand Palestinians. Many with agonizing injuries, in some cases leading to long-term impairment or death. By causing critical shortages of medical supplies, including antibiotics and disinfectants. Israel's actions resulted in hazardous health procedures such as amputations without anesthetics, including on children. This has also prevented the administration of life-saving treatment to those with medical conditions, including chronic diseases. The survivors will carry an indelible trauma, having witnessed so much death and experienced destruction. Homelessness, emotional and material loss, endless humiliation and fear. Such experiences include witnessing the systemic destruction of entire neighborhoods. Digging through the rubble, often with bare hands, searching for loved ones, seeing bodies desecrated, being rounded up. Stripped and naked, blindfolded, and subjected to torture and other cruel, inhuman, and degrading treatment. And ultimately, being starved, adults and children alike. The savagery of Israel's latest assault is best illustrated by the torment inflicted upon children of all ages killed or rescued from under the rubble. Maids, orphaned, many without surviving family. Considering the significance of children to the future development of a society. Inflicting serious bodily or mental harm to them can be reasonably interpreted as a means to destroy the group in whole or in part. Deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical dispassion in whole or in part. By mid-December, Israel's bombs and shells had destroyed or severely damaged most life-sustaining infrastructure, including seventy seven percent. Of healthcare facilities, sixty eight percent of telecommunications infrastructure, almost half of all roads. Over sixty percent of Gaza's homes, ninety eight percent of residential buildings. All universities and sixty percent of other educational facilities, including thirteen libraries. Israel has also destroyed at least one hundred ninety five heritage sites, two hundred and eight mosques. Three churches and Gaza's central archives, thank you.
Natalie Zini?
Uh, my name is Natalie Zini, I am a Carbondale resident, and I am currently finishing my first year of graduate school. Through the University of Denver, working towards a master's in social work. I'm finishing up my first year internship at Amman High School. And because of my work, I'm currently, I'm constantly reflecting on the privilege and privilege and power that I hold. As a white-passing, Mexican, Lebanese, Muslim American, as well as the power that I yielded as a student and as an intern. In these reflections, I'm asking myself, how am I using my privilege and my power to uplift the collective? And do my values align with the words that I speak and the ways that I show up? I'd like to believe that each of you care about humanity, and that the reason you remain silent in the face of such atrocities. Come from a belief that your silence is actually doing more good. However, what your silence is communicating to me, is that not only are you okay with the status quo, but you are in support of it. Across the country, college students are using their privilege and their power to push against the status quo. These brave students who have their entire lives ahead of them are risking their futures to stand for humanity and demand more from our elected leaders. This brave generation recognizes that what we are witnessing is not okay, and they will not stand for it. And in the face of their bravery, they are met with violence. Your silence communicates to me that you are okay with this, you are okay with our youth. Being violently controlled by our government for speaking up against genocide. So I'm back to questioning, why do you remain silent? How many lives have to be lost before you stand for humanity? How many children have to die? How many mothers have to grieve, have to grieve the loss of their children before you feel in your heart it is time to speak up? Maybe it won't do anything on a national level, but at least you can sleep at night knowing you did everything within your power to stand against genocide and stand for humanity. I believe that each of us have a responsibility to stand for humanity and to show our children the importance of honoring and uplifting all beings. And creating a more peaceful and equitable future. Your silence tells our children that you do not care about those in need, and if this isn't true, please use your voice to stand for what you believe in. And if you find that you simply don't care about Palestinian lives, then I invite you to question why. Why is it that you are not able to soften your heart and feel the weight of one child, feel the weight of the death of one child, let alone fifteen thousand dead children? Each of us have a voice, some of them, some of our voices are louder based on our race, gender, and position of power. You have a voice that reaches far further than mine, that is far louder than mine, and what are you doing with this voice? What are you communicating to our federal government and to our local community, by your actions or inaction? A reminder that your silence speaks volumes, thank you.
That's the last one that I have on the list. I have three more on the back. Robin McBurney?
Robin McBurney, eleven Ruby Mountain Drive, Carbondale. Israel's assault has decimated Gaza's already fragile healthcare system. Hospitals, also sheltering displaced Palestinians, have been overwhelmed. By deliberately targeting hospitals, air and ground attacks gradually turn them into death zones. Israel, Israeli soldiers have occupied hospitals, encircling them with tanks and snipers. Israeli soldiers have arrested, mistreated, and tortured medical staff. Patients, and displaced people, and forced them, even premature babies, out of hospitals. In some cases, causing the death of those babies. The doctors who remained have worked night and day, making impossible decisions on which patients to treat, based on chance of survival. Ground invasion and aerial bombardment have destroyed agricultural land, farms, crops, animals, and fishing assets. Raively undermining people's livelihoods, the environment, and agricultural system. By December seventh, over ninety percent of Gaza's residents were suffering from severe food insecurity. By February twenty twenty four, Palestinians trapped in northern Gaza resorted to animal feed and grass for sustenance. And at the end of February, with deaths and starvation on the rise, and between mid-January and the end of February, the UN afforded numerous attacks. Against Palestinians seeking aid. The supply of water was also severely affected, fuel scarcity hampered the water sanitation, driving people to use water contaminated by sewage. Solid waste and seawater. The impact of these conditions on children is well-known, in Gaza, the risk of starvation is already tangible, a horrific reality. These human-made conditions have put at risk an estimated fifty thousand pregnant Palestinian women and twenty thousand newborn babies. Increased miscarriages up to three hundred percent. Israel's relentless targeting of all means of basic survival. Israel's relentless targeting of all means of basic survival has compromised the ability of Palestinians in Gaza to live on that land. This engineered collapse of life-sustaining infrastructure corresponds to the stated intentions to make Gaza, quote, "permanently impossible to live in," where, quote, "no human being can exist."
Harper Axelmann?
President of the Soul. In the latest Gaza assault, direct evidence of genocidal intent is uniquely present. This rhetoric has painted the affluent population as the enemy to be eliminated and forcibly displaced. High-ranking Israeli officials with Command Authority have issued harrowing public statements alleging genocidal intent, including as follows. President Isaac Haradok stated that "an entire nation out there is responsible for the seven October attack" and that Israel would break their backbone. Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu referred to Palestinians as "Amalek and monsters." The Amalek reference is to a biblical passage in which God commands all, "Now go and smite Amalek and utterly destroy all what they have and spare them not, but slave both man and woman, infant and suffering, ox and sheep, camel and ass." Minister of Defense Yoav Galen referred to Palestinians as "human enemies" and announced full offense on Gaza, hovering all the restraints and that Gaza will never return to what it was. IDF spokesperson Daniel Lagarde stated that focus should be on causing maximum damage, demonstrating a strategy of disproportionate and indiscriminate violence. Dutch calls for nihilatory violence directed at troops on duty comes from strong evidence of direct and public incitement to commit genocide. Decades of discourse dehumanizing Palestinians have created the grounding of such incitements. There is progen evidence that these statements have been internalized and acted upon by troops on the ground. Israeli soldiers have, including on social media channels run by the Israeli military, referred to Palestinians as terrorists, roaches, rats, and have repeated terms articulated by political leaders, chanting that there are no uninvolved civilians, boasting about killing families, mothers, and children, humiliating Palestinians, detonating dozens of bombs, destroying entire residential neighborhoods, and desecrating cemeteries and places of worship. Israel's prime minister and president have stated that Israel was fighting on behalf of all subalite states and peoples, a terrorism that has no place in the modern world, that they will uproot evil and it will be good for the entire region and the world. This racist rhetoric echoes that of other Palestinian powers and tries to construe Israel's genocidal violence as legitimate in light of Palestinians' alleged barbarity and putting money in character. Thank you.
Amy Hausman?
Hi, my name is Amy Hausman. I'm a resident in Glenwood Springs, although I'm a former resident of Carbondale and have been looking to move back to Carbondale. And I did want to point out, I know that the ceasefire group did turn into the town clerk a petition with four hundred and eighty-eight names. It should be recognized, I guess, that that petition was largely circulated at your last First Friday here in Carbondale. So to think that your own citizens or your own town population is not concerned about this issue is probably not justified. Anyway, we have also offered a copy of the Cold UN Special Report in the documents that were also given to the town clerk. We encourage you all to read it in its entirety and sit with the weight of it. In conclusion, we are living here in uniquely terrible moment in history, where we are not only watching a genocide unfold in real time, we are also watching our taxpayer dollars fund it. Our elected representatives have failed to take any meaningful action to stop it, and at this point, they are actively ignoring the desperate pleas of their constituents, demanding that they take action. We are aware that you are not the State Department, and you're not the federal government. However, you are the representatives of this community, and so we ask you to take a stand and help save lives. To quote the town, "Do not be daunted by the enormity of the world's breed. Do justly now, love mercy now, walk humbly now." You are not obligated to complete the word, but neither are you free to abandon it. And I would like to also note that I am, I'm a long-term, longtime Valley resident. I am Jewish. I've lived in Israel for a time. When I was in my twenties, it was just a few years ago. And I do still have relatives in Israel, but I cannot support what Israel is currently doing in Gaza. Thank you.
Do we have anybody online?
No.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. Moving on to trustee comments. Usually kind of go around if you've been at any meetings recently or anything like that, and kick us off. I think the Garfield Clean Energy Meeting on Friday, it was the annual board retreat. We spent time down in Rife and visited a solar, a couple of different solar sites, a EV charger that they had installed near their county building down there. And also visited how to affect humanity's latest project with PD Commons, which is an S zero project. And it's got enough solar and it's all electric, so each tenant's utility bills will be twenty dollars a lot. So we have a great tour. And Garfield Clean Energy remains focused on their goals. We got some updates. You know, the toughest goal the Garfield Clean Energy set themselves, ourselves, is to reduce annual energy use by one and a half percent per year for six years or so. And then that adds up, I believe the total goal is twelve percent. That's really hard to do when you've got a growing economy and more people living here. It's not per capita level. It's a total goal. So we're behind on that, unfortunately, with some of the others going down the solar installations, renewable energy, mix and grid, things like that. So that was a good meeting. We have a joint meeting with Garfield County Commission, this board does, once a year, and that's coming up in June. So just putting it out there to think about if there's anything in particular you'd like to address when the county commissioners come. We generally have an agenda. I'm sure we'll talk about the rodeo a little bit, but you know, those kinds of things where we overlap and where we try to collaborate. And we try to focus on the things where we have kind of shared interest in, you know, partnering with them. Thank you to the staff and the community for a great First Friday since we last met. The Pride Parade, the Family Block Party, and other events were really well-attended and went off really well. And then a great Dandelion Day run by our middleboard, and a lot of folks this weekend was a great event. I think that that's all I have left. Anybody else have some comments?
Last Friday, I attended a Thirteen Center Equity Symposium for the community. It was through the Manaus Fund, and it was a great event. It focused on diversity, inclusion, equity, and brought the community together. And it was just a reminder of how important that it is, and especially, I thank everybody who did a talk today about your public comments. I appreciate that and the reminder that. There is also, there is such a cultural importance placed on local sports in a small town. With that, I want to give you kudos to our Goring Fork High School Athletic Director, that's Krista Bardo, for being awarded the Best Three-A Athletic Director of the Year in the state of Colorado. And lastly, I just, as a new trustee, the town departments, they did a presentation for us, and I just wanted to thank the expertise, the passion, and the knowledge that each of the departments have. Some departments even well knew a vision, mission, and core values. And it's just an accomplishment that we are such a small town focused on a lot of local situations, and it's just admirable that, I feel, the resources that we have and how we help the town. So thank you.
Sure. So maybe some of some of the folks here aren't aware, but this is the first whole meeting for new, for the three of us. We've got the pickleball to Palestine on the agenda, quite the, quite the diversity of things to think about and consider. But before we do that, I want to chat real quickly or just acknowledge real quickly our orientation meetings, which happened in three or four hours one morning and three or four, two hours the other evening. And I think realistically, I'd be happy if those were, if that were twice as long. I just want to not say enough, and I've said to a number of people already, how engaged and enthusiastic the people who work in this building are. We're going to disagree at times, absolutely, but there's no doubt that they, they take the town Carbondale seriously. They take their roles seriously, from pickleball courts to sewage sludge. And I think it was real high opening to kind of take the measure of that, because I don't think that's probably normal in most fluorescent offices, municipal offices around, around the country or in the state. So, so I think for whatever, for whatever it's worth, I want to, I want to acknowledge that. And the people who are, who are here putting in the full-time work day in and day out. I think you see a lot of that, government-led programming, but I did not have any sort of public meetings, so I was talking about fun stuff. And Dandelion Day, I think is one of those, those festivals that certainly makes you proud to be, to be a Carbondale. And we lean into that, I think, so. Which brings me to peace, love, and dandelions. And I feel that, that, that sometimes we ought to consider a little bit more of the peace and love part. And what I want to address today is those of you who are still here, Danny might have stayed here. I, as someone who has taken, has, has been at the hot stand up there on a number of occasions, I know how much effort it takes to write, to write something. I think today certainly was much more prepared remarks and read by somebody else. However, I was here last week and heard a lot more direct, direct questions to the board about whether, you know, to the board about putting something on the agenda. And my feeling, having been in that spot, is that, that is that there is, that we shouldn't govern by not, by not listening and not giving an opportunity for things to jump. I very well may, if, if, if a, if a motion is made and or resolution is made, I very well may, may not, may not, may choose to not do that or not to vote for it. However, I think it's important that we hear, hear folks out and give an opportunity for those, maybe, maybe more so than anything, an opportunity for folks to come together and create, create a resolution that is more Carbondale. And, and I would encourage you all to do that. I would encourage my fellow trustees to, to put this on the agenda and allow us, as a community, to discuss some of this stuff. We, you know, at the last meeting, we stood up and supported Arden Day. Every time we, we put solar panels on a roof, we know we're not, we're not solving climate change, but we're making a statement. And I, I encourage, I encourage us and I encourage you all. And frankly, frankly, the tone today and, and the lack of understanding that we're new representatives and the accusational tone that, that our silence speaks volumes before we had a chance to speak, I didn't, I mean, I'll just say right out, out there, I don't appreciate that, and I don't think that's fair to my other new members. So I encourage you, I encourage you to, to consider that as well. That's not from a position of authority, it's from a position of understanding how best we might be able to come to some conclusions together. So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and say that I'd be willing to entertain putting this on the agenda and talking about with my, with my fellow trustees what that would look like. With, you know, with some reasonable constraints on time and, and all of that I knew here. But we, you know, I would, I would, I think that's a reasonable response to, to the effort and time that, that we're well-meaning and well-soaking folks have put into, into this. There we go.
I will similarly acknowledge that. I ended this stuff. I have heard, well, kind of on some degree that I feel like we have at prior meetings, heard quite a bit of commentary to the contrary, which does make the decision more difficult when you start hearing all, all the sides that sort of come out of the woodwork. And I don't know that there, there is such a deep and disturbing issue, obviously, that there's, I don't think there's any way to avoid it being part of our discussion, one way or another. But, but I do feel that we have aired a lot of opinions on this stage already, and we have been given a very public platform within which to make their opinions known. And I don't know that, I don't feel that I personally bring any special knowledge to this, to the table in terms of being able to contribute anything to that discussion necessarily. And I find that the parsing through the language of the resolution could take a whole year, have meetings probably, to try to mitigate every one of those points. So I, I think because of the complexity of it, and, and because if you want to stay with us, we have an agenda item later in the night that's all of the projects that we're working on as a town, those items, you know, happen later and later at night, and, you know, that stuff does feel not very important oftentimes compared to Gaza and bombs flying on civilians. But that is our job, is to focus on those things. And I do feel that in the past decade or so, over, over-focus on national issues and international issues has oftentimes taken people's heads out of the local politics and, and engagement in the way that you can work for peace in your own community and build it from the ground up. I just feel that there is an importance to, you know, our work may feel small oftentimes, but there's an importance to taking care of these small issues and, and so we, that you think we need the time to, to focus on them and not be, not be distracted constantly, even though that we, we should be distracted by how disturbing the world is. On that note, I'll just make, make a couple mentions of these minor, more minor sounding things. There was a, the Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission did sort of get its first look at the MAP plan. There was quite a bit of sense that there's a lot more work to be done on that plan. I think they've made their initial displeasure known to the, to Kevin, I'm the consultant, but I don't, but it's certainly the starting point of this thing, so it's not. It's, hopefully, there's, we can get this thinking track and try to really incorporate their commentary as well as the age-friendly group made a presentation for last VPTC meeting as well. And there's sort of a merging process of taking a lot of the notes that they've taken and that the consultant collected from surveys, plus the expertise of the Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission. I think the consultant's problem actually is it's maybe too much information at this point. They did a really good job of collecting information, but actually synthesizing and, and deciding that you're how we're going to prioritize is somewhere where it, frankly, there's sort of more native knowledge on the Trails Commission and age-friendly and this board and in-town as opposed to the consultant. So trying to figure out how to work with the consultant well so they can sort of toward that knowledge regurgitate to us in a useful way. Yeah, otherwise, Dandelion Day, Boondale Light Week is going on this week. There's all kinds of things. I think you can move it up on the internet in different ways. There was a rodeo for kids on Monday. There's a, something going on right now, I think.
Scavenger hunt?
Scavenger hunt's going on, yeah. And there's, I think, a thing of rebel Friday. That's a great way to get out, and there's coffee every morning at the corner, pre-coffee, and I don't know if people are even, I think occasionally out, then out there fixing people's bikes and stuff. And then just finally, I have to make a note of dismay about the, the new. Unfortunately, we have the artists coming next week, but unfortunately, I was really bummed to see them installing gutters down the middle of each one of these, of these canvases that we approved this project based on, in large part based on the art that was coming with it, and then to see that be so disrespected. I mean, it may take us personally as artists, but I personally don't like to work on a canvas as a drainpipe down the middle of it. And especially down the middle of it, I feel like creates crazy, crazy compositional problems we do. So I'm just really bummed that, that, that we continue to see. that we continue to see sort of the lack of care from from people developing projects in town and and I don't know what the I don't think there's any recourse at this point on that project, but I do think it brings up a larger question about storage units in town and whether there's opportunity there to generate income for rural housing based on the storage units. Find that they're not not giving us other benefits in town. Potentially that that could be making some wise. Justin Collins.
I just wanted to say that I'm honored to be here tonight and excited to get to work and have had multiple meetings with constituents already. My phone has been ringing, my email has been going off. So it's exciting and sort of amplifies the thought that people have things to say, they want people to talk to, which is why I wanted to be a part of this. I'm also grateful that we have a respectful place for public opinion to be heard. I think sometimes it can seem like it's a long portion of time to take up, but I think that I'm grateful that we allow for it and I'm grateful that people have the courage to show up and speak their minds. And I I don't want to see that get limited because it's long. Because I think it's a really, really, really important part of democracy. So thank you for being here tonight and I I hope that people continue to use this forum in whatever way brings true for them. So I'm excited to be here and I'm excited to get to work.
So to wrap up, everyone, trustee expressed
Erica's on, I don't know if she wants to say anything.
And potentially adding this C star resolution to the agenda, it requires three trustees to add line of plan into agenda, so just probably won't be doing that. Erica, did you want to give us any updates?
Um, sure, if you can hear me okay.
Sure, yeah.
That work awesome. Amazing, I'm pulling onto Federal Boulevard. Just so folks know, I was at the Roaring Fork High School Girls Soccer Game. They made the quarterfinals and my amazing daughter's on the team. And I would just say I attended the chamber meeting last week. They've got business after hours tomorrow night at ooh, the Village Smithy. And it's a cool event to network with local businesses and meet the Chamber Board if anybody wants to go. And then the only thing, other thing I'll mention regarding Roaring Fork High School is they have their art show this week, Wednesday through Friday. And in addition to amazing soccer players, they have some awesome artists. I'd highly recommend that the public go check out their artwork. I'm continually amazed every year that I get to go see it. So that's Wednesday, Thursday and Friday that they have the art show going on. That's all I've got.
Great, thanks for the reminder, just added that to my calendar. Okay, I think we're moving on. Any other trustee comments in this? I think one and I'll connect on the pickleball request and we can bring the trustee, the trustees up to screen on that. I don't think we have to debate whether that goes on the agenda, it's something that we're already involved in, and I think we can just discuss their request and and see if that makes sense. Attorney's comments, Mark, you don't think he? Uh, manager's comment.
He's quiet, he makes me look bad. Sorry, forgot about the mic for a minute. So thank you to the new trustees, fair kind words about the staff. I know they worked very hard to make sure that they gave you as well rounded an orientation as possible. I will pass that along, your comments along to the staff, they'll appreciate it. And Ross, we are extremely lucky to have the kind of professional staff that we do here. So just a reminder to the board. I have a couple of responses with regard to the CML conference. But the cheap seats, as it were, expire on the seventeenth, so if we're going to get you registered, I'd rather the town paid less for those registrations. And then we can release additional extra hotel rooms if we have them. So please get me either a commitment or a an RSVP that no, you won't be able to attend this week. Also, we have some events coming up for the pool capital campaign. I, right now, I looked at the list this afternoon of the RSVPs, I suspect there may be a couple of errors. I have two trustees who have RSVP'd on that list. You're one of them. Yep. And Ben, so if anybody else is going to attend, would you please let me know tonight? And then also, just to let you know that we will be doing and you'll see a lot of public outreach and communications. The official kickoff of the capital campaign will be done publicly at First Friday in June. I know that Margaret is having great fun planning, I don't know what she's planning, pool party, crazy pictures with a lifeguard stand, I don't, I don't know what she's doing, but that that will be sort of a big deal downtown to kick that off on next month's First Friday. As you all are aware, we are doing a salary and benefit survey at the two-year mark instead of the normal three-year mark. As I'm sure you can imagine, it's extremely hard to keep up with all the changes in the work environment. So just to let you know, we're doing a presentation to all of the staff tomorrow at lunch. And hopefully being able to answer their questions, they've also been very responsive to a survey that they have been able to fill out anonymously, even though some of them suspect it's not anonymous, but it really is. Tomorrow is Peace Officers Memorial Day. If you were not aware of that, I will just say with regard to the Board of County Commissioners and that joint work session in June, I normally will get a phone call at least two weeks before that meeting from the county manager asking what we want to talk about. So if you can perhaps be prepared to throw your ideas at at the mayor before the final meeting in May, that would be helpful. And lastly, just a very short newcomers update. I've seen a lot of things going around with regard to people changing housing, some of the donated housing has served its purpose and a couple of the newcomers families have found trailers to live in or apartments to rent, what have you, some of them have gotten their work permits. We're not as involved. Valley Settlement and Recovery Resources, English in Action, West Mountain Regional Health Alliance, they're all still involved. But we do not as yet have sort of a lead agency to pull all of that together. But I know that it's still being discussed. Eagle County, Pittkin County, myself, Rob Stein, Colin Laird, so so that's happening. With regard to the showers at the rec center, I don't know if I said this at the last meeting, but the many of the people who were getting free showers at the rec center are now members of the rec center. They have purchased memberships. And I have been told, unfortunately by the police, that there are a couple of new newcomers that we are not familiar with who have had interactions with the police over the last week. Nothing particularly serious, but just so you know, we're still watching to see what happens as Denver shuts their shelters and changes their policies and procedures. So that's really all I have.
So I I think as senior staff memo, all of the public infrastructure is complete and inspected by the town with the exception of two undersized trees that need to be replaced. And so the recommendation for tonight is to withhold the ten percent of the original app security for public improvements through the rest of the warranty period and the additional twenty seven, two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for the cost for replacing the undersized trees. And so we're recommending that the security be reduced to one thousand fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars in that instance.
And for our new trustees, this is a pretty routine thing that we do where I'm sure justice is familiar with it from the word, but when a developer is required to make some public infrastructure improvements that we're going to be responsible for long term with the next sewage line, site blocks, trees, we give them what a two-year warranty period usually. And so we make sure that all that is still in good work for after two years and we hold some credit or cash that we can give back to them.
Just curious whether it's just as easy to wait till they yeah, do everything that we we would like them to do in terms of getting those trees replaced. In terms of, and just just that impressive, you know, at one point, what and what is what is maybe negotiable, what is not not issues, is the standard?
Yeah, so the DIA allows for partial reductions in the security for work that's completed. And so the DIA does allow them to request this.
Letting speak.
If there's no other questions, somebody can make.
I I don't have a question, but I I guess do we, do we do inspections of lighting at night? How do we double check that? So because I believe that new storage facility, I think it meets the letter of the lighting code, but when you're on Twelfth Street nowadays, those under bay areas are so elevated now and the lights under them have no side blocking that you get glare off on the street, you know, in that street in the middle of the night and I I don't think it's, I don't think it's actually technically breaking our lighting code because they are under these pretty enormous overhang things, but they create a huge amount of bounce light as well as there's sort of these box that come that shoot light straight out towards the street. So I don't know, I'm not sure if that's that would be the one thing that I feel like if you can sort of take a look at that. But I would, in general, I think.
Maybe I'd like to make a motion, the director made a motion on page two of the
I move to approve the release of sixty thousand eight forty-five ninety-five thirty of the public improvements and except public improvements, except landscaping with the warranty start date of May fourteenth, twenty twenty four for lot two, Carbondale Center Place.
Second. Motion by Jess, second by Chris. All in favor, say aye. Don't be Erica's voting right now, it's okay. All present are unanimous in favor, so motion passes. Thank you. Next action item is a Wilderness Workshop Park Use Agreement Parade Permit and Liquor License Approval for June seventh special. Is anybody here to talk about this one?
Right here in the back.
And this here, just to introduce yourself to the board to leave them, it's also a little bit about the event.
Yeah, so my name is Erin Rich, I'm the advocacy director at Wilderness Workshop, I know some of you. We are going to be hosting our annual community party this year. As with most years, it'll take place in Sober Spark from five thirty to eight thirty PM. This year, we're really trying to focus the event on the recent victory of securing twenty years protection for the Thompson Divide, which town of Carbondale has been an amazing supporter throughout the year, so thank you so much for your advocacy on that. A little bit different from years prior, we have decided to do a little parade to kick off the event. We know Carbondale loves a good parade with costumes. So that's going to start at five fifteen in front of the Village Smithy and eventually end in Sober Spark. And we will be, you know, we know that the the town has a street flooded for First Friday, except on when, oh, please, that that street, I always mispronounce that. So we will be trying to find some volunteer crossguards for that to make sure that we can ensure the safety of all participants. There will be alcohol served at the event available for purchase within the confines of Sober Spark, not at the parade, to to be clear. And we will have folks monitoring entrance and exits to make sure folks aren't leaving with outside alcohol. We'll have volunteers doing that, but we also have some hired security this year, which is again different from past years. We'll have two folks acting as hired security to help reinforce volunteers there. We'll also be making sure to check IDs and of folks before they get alcohol and we'll be risk banning people so we can keep track of people who are over twenty-one for serving alcohol. And then also I think for kind of Carbondale regulations, anybody serving alcohol, whether that be a Wilderness Workshop staff member, or we'll be having beer from Aspen Brewing Company again, will be tip certified.
Great. Thanks, Erin. And, you know, these are fairly routine also, but with the bigger events, we have them come before the board and we always have staff recommendations where Eric's looked through it, Chief Wilson's looked through it and approved. By the time it gets to us, it's usually pretty straightforward, but it's not have any concerns that you're aware of, Jessica or anyone?
No, no concerns that I'm aware of.
Any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the Wilderness Workshop Park Use. And what else is it saying? And liquor license for June seventh, twenty twenty four and parade permit.
So we'll merge it from Chris, second by Christina, all in favor, say aye.
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 Right, all trustees present in favor, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Erin.
Great, thank you. Hope to see you all there.
Nice to have a parade when the street's already closed. Okay, this is, I think, our biggest item of the evening and it's complex. I'll frame it a little bit and ask staff between Jared, our town planner, and Mark, our town attorney, to fill in your gaps. So this is a combined application for rezoning, administrative site plan review and alternative compliance for the Town of Carbondale Aquatic Center. Unusual thing is that the town is the applicant and and that puts us in an unusual position that very frequently in. I talked to Jared a week about it this morning in preparation for that kind of unusual circumstance. The way I think about this after that conversation is that we're in that quasi judicial role now that we just learned a lot about in our trainings and discussions in the past couple of weeks. So I really think our best approach here is to treat this just like any other application, as if it weren't the town, because the applicant. So this is the application being presented to us. We're no longer in the you know, figuring out the budget, figuring out what features it should have, figuring out how big the pool should be, figuring out if this is the best site or another site's the best site, all those decisions have been made. And this is now an application for rezoning, so and site plan review and alternative compliance. So the questions before us are going to be really straightforward. They're going to be questions that Jared can frame, but they're going to be around is this rezoning consistent with the cop plan, future land use map? Is this site plan consistent with that zone district? And just like on another application, if it was a bank or a multifamily residential or or mixed use or anything else, we really start redesigning that for them at that point. So that's what I think we want to be careful to avoid, which could be challenging for the trustees who aren't here, as we have designed this over the past few years. But that's where we are. And so I think, you know, ultimately, we're going to need a motion. We're going to need to take our vote, and as we learned from our Adola trainer last week, that motion, if it's a motion in favor, will need to reference the findings and that it's consistent with these findings and the conditions. If it's a motion opposed, it will need to have some reasons why, which of the criteria does the application not meet compared to the applicant in the case. And so hopefully that's helpful. Maybe Jared, you can give us any more framing and then we can ask. Maybe Jared, you can give us any more framing and then we can ask ask some questions. And Mark, would you like to add anything? Yeah.
I just want to make the board aware that I've already heard this presentation on P and Z. I don't think, but I have, I feel like I can judge it based on the information that's being presented today. I just wanted to let everybody know that I've already heard this presentation and was a part of the decision in K and Z. Make sure everybody's comfortable.
Jared, you want to kick it off? Brandon, if Mark, if you want to. Great. And we do have Andy Corver, the lead architect on the project here to kind of represent the applicant. So we're not talking to ourselves as applicant. Jared, you want to?
So
And this is the public hearing, right? Our general blow here is presentation from staff with a short overview, presentation from the applicant. We have an opportunity to ask staff questions. We have an opportunity to ask the applicant questions. I'll open the public hearing. Others can then comment. I'll close the public hearing. Then we'll deliberate and then we'll let them decide. So we do a lot of clarifying before we start talking about what are we.
Yeah, so, you know, briefly summarizing the staff report, this is a combined application for rezoning administrative site plan and alternative compliance. Typically for some of the new trustees, when we have kind of multifaceted applications, it's different review decision points, some are made by staff, some are made by the planning commissions, some are made by board trustees. We typically pack those as one comprehensive review and send that up to the kind of highest level of decision making. And so that's why the administrative site plan reviews before you all tonight. In other instances, that would just be held us or be reviewed by staff. So a- as Ben discussed, you know, this has been this application discussed at previous meetings where the board acted as more of the client than the owner of the property, but for tonight, you'll be acting as kind of a land use reviewing authority. And so this project has been presented through the Historic Preservation Commission, CPAC. Town Laborist. As well as the Planning Zoning Commission. The U S Forest Service and E boards have been in conversation with this and obviously the partner commission has weighed in on this numerous times. And so one of the major components of this is a rezoning request from open space to public facility. The main rationale for that is be is due to setback limitations of the open space zone district. The open space zone district as written today would require that the main pool building be essentially at the rear of the property away from Main Street. And so when discussing this with the with the design team, we felt that a request for public facility zoning was warranted for a few reasons. One, it's a public facility. It's a historic pool used on a historic pool used site. And two, the the application would largely comply with the zone district as opposed to requiring variances to allow the existing building or proposed building to be located. During the review, the Historic Preservation Commission and the Plan Zoning Commission expressed overall support in the project. As you can see in the memo, some comments were made about Main Street facade, menstruation, brick patterns. There was overall support for having a prominent building corner facing Main Street and Seventh Street. And there was discussions about, you know, whether the whether the proposed zoning is considered spot zoning or you know, how much it's in compliance with with the future land use map. At the end of the day, the Plan Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the combined application. And they felt that the nature of the facility and really the historical utility of the facility really supported the public facility zone district and that if this was ever not a publicly owned property, some of the other zone districts considered in the downtown future land use map might be warranted. I'll really let the applicant or the design team, excuse me, speak to, you know, walk you guys through the the design and many aspects of the site plan. I will highlight that there were you know, quite a bit of comments on the landscape plan. Dan alluded to those earlier tonight. One of kind of the bigger outstanding items that that the tree board has brought up is what to do with the Siberian elms kind of adjacent to the site and then Sober Spark. But overall, there's been support from the tree board for the onsite removal and replanting as presented in the application. And then two of the main components of the or two of the alternative compliance components are fencing. So as you saw on the staff report, in order to meet building codes for pool codes requirements, a taller fence needs to be adjacent to Main Street. And the second request is for streetscape landscaping. So our code requires a five foot wide landscape strip, which would essentially be between Main Street and the front of the building along Main Street. What's being presented before you tonight and what was supported by the Plan Zoning Commission is an alternative appliance compliance request to not have a continuous five foot wide landscape strip. But due to the nature of this being very pedestrian heavy with the pool, with the bus stop located right there to have a couple islands of landscaping that kind of meet the intent of the five foot wide landscape strip, but also promote a lot of the pedestrian activity that's envisioned along this building and along Main Street. So with all of that being said, staff is recommending approval of the combined application with the conditions outlined in staff memo and finance fact. I would highlight that these conditions are largely the same as what was presented and proved by the Plan Zoning Commission, with the exception, I think, of two conditions which were addressed by the design team prior to presentation for the board of trustees. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have, otherwise I'm sure the design team's presentation will shed some more light on the overall side.
Any questions for the staff that just want about process decisions we're going to make? Yeah, and I kind of lined it out in my notes that, you know, it's kind of three decisions. The first one will probably be, does it make sense to rezone to public facility in this location? Just because that's only work in that location. And then is this site plan insistent with that kind of zoning? And then are we okay with the alternative compliance, which is higher fence and a change in landscaping?
One question, double person then. Is it the typical progression when a zoning, a rezoning application from them that that construction drawings are in the works and we spend a that? And a zoning change is has yet to be made? Or is that, is it generally, no, no judgment, is it generally that we, there's an agreement on zoning before someone puts the effort, time and money, assuming we're treating this as as a quasi private level or something? Is that usually what happens, sir?
I I would say most of the time, there'll be a certain level of design documents. I don't, I think Andy probably could speak to that percentage. Maybe it's thirty percent type, fifteen percent construction drawings, just to make sure there's a certain level of feasibility in the site plan, but typically that conceptual level plan is what's presented before the town prior to an applicant spending time, money and effort to kind of go to that extra length of design documents.
Yeah, so that's right. This is much more designed than typically is when it has.
Yeah, just quickly, the U D C is where the town first added a site planning requirement to our zoning. And, you know, the years prior to that, we had typically in most rezoning approvals put in a two-year limit that said, if you don't pursue development pursuant to your new zoning within two years, it lapses back as it used to be. And so in my view, the town has actually encouraged applicants and developers to take that conceptual design as close to construction drawings as possible. And so the town can process the zoning and the construction contemporaneously. It avoids them wasting the two years on subsequent approvals, but also lets the board know what's going to be there if they grant the zone.
Okay, any other questions for staff at this point? All right, turn it over to the design team. Thanks for being here, Andy, and I see others on line. Welcome back. This is also just a nice update and overview, I think, for the public to see where it is right now, where the lens are.
Okay, I'm trying to get to my slideshow here.
It's under window, Andy.
Hi, thanks, everyone. My post about tonight. So thanks to the town for doing the great technical report for everyone here. I'm going to do a brief process overview, but most of you guys were here for that, so I'm not going to belabor some of the pasta.
And then you just introduced yourself.
Yeah, my name's Andrea Corburn and I'm an architect and owner in principle with Land and Shelter Architects. And my colleague Taylor Higgins is on the phone today. She's the project manager. It's been working with me since the start. And we also have Dave Detwiler from Lambert, so your owner's rep is with us today as well. Thank you. The Connect One Design is our landscape architect and our planner, but all of our teammates from Connect One Design are actually out of town tonight, so you're stuck with me for the for the planning presentation. And I do the best I can. And I'm going to start with just a quick history. My current proposal aligns with the master plan. This is a small building with two bodies of water that one is a lap pool, one is a recreation pool, and then there's a hot tub. And this is essentially what was approved back in twenty twenty with the master plan study. Our site is currently in zoned open space, which is why we're coming to you with a rezoning application at the moment. Early on in the process, we identified that the facility didn't work keeping its current zoning. So we sat down with town staff and came up with what Jared and the rest of town staff believe was the best approach in order to bring this facility in compliance with current zoning code. So that was a rezoning application that's before you tonight. Around the facility, we have H C C, but the actual use of those facilities, so the Forest Service and the post office are effectively public facilities. We felt like that contiguousness of public facilities was actually the intent of that general block that we we approached this project with that, the sort of zone district that made sense for the block that we were on. Super brief timeline. The master plan for this facility was created back in twenty twenty. The town voted on the bond to fund it in twenty twenty-two. The design team was selected and contracted in the spring of twenty twenty-three. And we went through a process of aligning ourselves with budget and scope and began this land use application process in early winter this year and now we're come before you with that. And the goal is to begin demolition this summer. We're successful tonight and that would result in a pool opening that could be at the earliest, it would be the late summer of twenty twenty-five, but possibly not until the spring of twenty-six, depending on exact construction timing and winter conditions and things like that. This is the master plan layout and which has guided us today. General evolution of this is that the building has gotten a bit smaller and the lap pool has gotten a bit bigger. Otherwise, generally speaking, this is what we're following. And that all of the evolution has been guided by outreach, conversations with staff and users in our design advisory board. So this is the the current site plan and it is rotated on your screen from the last slide. So north is actually to the left on this slide. So we have a twenty-seven hundred square foot building. We have thirty-two hundred square foot lap pool and a twenty-five hundred square foot entertainment pool and a hundred and fifty square foot hot tub. Although the zone district allows for ninety percent impervious, our site as proposed is sixty-two percent impervious. And we are giving just slightly more than the zone required setback of fifteen feet. Leading the essential dimension order agreement. In our outreach and coordination leading up to this rezoning effort, we met with Parks and Recreation, Planning Department, Building Department, Public Works and Utilities and Finings. We met with Rafa about the bus stop, the Forest Service about the contiguous border and some specifics of the sewer line. Board of Trustees, Parks and Recreation Commission, a design advisory group that was comprised of some members from Parks and Rec, some members of the public, some pool users, the Tree Board, the Historic Preservation Commission and Carbondale Public Arts Commission. So those are just sort of boards and commissions. In addition to that, we did some general public outreach. So there were stations set up around town that had these posters and comment cards. We also posted a request for comment on carbondaleconnect.org and spread it out through email lists like through the chamber, through the town, through the recreation department. So to try and get out to people. And we did receive a couple of email comments. None of them were, and they were like things along the lines of like, are you going to have classes for seniors and things like, and most of those comments I would shuttle to staff because it wasn't, they weren't questions about the rezoning or the planning. But there was some, you know, interaction that was that was positive with the public. So in terms of circulation and transit around our site, we have pedestrian circulation along Main Street and along Seventh Street. One of the improvements that we're doing to the general infrastructure of the site is that sidewalk, that contiguous sidewalk will be new along Seventh Street. So on on this slide, that's the bottom that's going left, right on the slide. And that's going to connect to a new handicap accessible parking space, which is contiguous with the park's current parking. That actually was a request through the through the planning process. We had we had parallel accessible parking in the past, but we moved it to be part of the park's parking and extended that sidewalk through the process. This is bike parking. This is bike parking. This is bike parking. So there's a couple of different areas for potential bike parking. And one of the big picture ideas about this site is that there's a big open corner. So where now that building is sort of forming a wall or a big fence at the corner of Seventh and Main, we're sort of pushing it back from the corner and opening the sort of liveliness of the pool to that intersection. And really engaging the public in that way, hopefully. And on on Main Street, we have two large planter areas. And so it's not this, you know, the attention was never in this zone district has sort of like a twenty-foot expanse of concrete sidewalk, so it's planted. And there's some seating as part of that. So, you know, parents waiting to pick up a child from a birthday party or something like that has, there's sort of street furniture that can be used. The ditch and the ditch structures are all staying as it's. So one of the things that is slightly different from the master plan was this early idea of covering the ditch and we just determined early on that that is not feasible for water rights and. for water rights and other reasons. So everything to do with the ditches, it's as easy as that. So this is the fencing proposal. Red on this screen is showing you chain link fence. That's an eight-foot tall chain link fence. That's, um, colored green, that this idea like they do often on tennis courts to sort of make it go away. Um, but generally speaking, this is a, this is a safety feature and requirement of the pool code. Um, and then we have a bit fancier, um, more elegant fence along Main Street. It's still pretty tall, six foot six. We're trying to make it so that people can't like go in there at night, that you don't want to be in there. It needs to be protected. It's a pool. Um, but they're, they're relatively tall fences. Um, utilities and infrastructure are on this slide, so red is showing you the electric lines coming to a new three-phase transformer that we're placing, um, just along Seventh Street. This sort of area where my cursor is, is the kind of utility core. Um, following, generally speaking, where utilities were located already, we weren't trying to make major changes. So there's a sort of trash, a deliveries enclosure, an electrical transformer, um, and, and a bike parking all in this zone. Um, green represents a sewer line. Um, we are actually moving the park sort of sewer line, which currently runs through our site and under where the building would go out into the street, so this, the park service sewer will be out here and the new building sewer will be here. This, um, that's a sewer line that needs to be abandoned. This is water service, and this is a communications. In terms of, um, wheelchair access and emergency vehicle access, we have a place for emergency vehicles to pull up off of Main Street if needed, and this can also be used for occasional deliveries, staff only for the pool. Um, and then this is the handicap accessible parking space. Um, this slide is showing in red trees to be removed with the project. Um, trees that are in green remain, and there's a couple of trees that we're looking at replanting, transplanting to new locations. So the, the large elm on the corner stays. There's another pretty good sized, um, right in front of the building, in between the building and Main Street, that also remains. Sorry, everybody. And it's in our, it's in our renderings. We did lots of photographing, but you get it's like size and everything, right? So I really should have had that. Sorry, everybody. All of the trees that are along the fence line with the Forest Service are being removed. That is for reasons for their project and ours. Those trees are all engaged with the fence and would come out whether we were doing the pool project or not. Um, because of their project, but just that, that fence line is, is full removal. And of course, there was the one large very large slush tree that already came down, that would have been too close to our foundation to save on the eastern edge of the building. And then there was another large elm, um, just south of the site that was identified as the arborist is one that was struggling as well. So that is another one that's coming out with our project. We met with the Historic, um, Preservation Commission, not because this site is in the HCC zone district, but because it's adjacent to it and it's part of downtown core of Carbondale, and we wanted to respect that and figure out the best way to design this building to be, um, kind of in the spirit of HCC zoning. So that's tricky, because this project is, and I'm gonna go to a floor plan here, oops, back one. It's changing rooms and a mechanical room, and it just doesn't have windows, right? So the Historic Commercial Core District of Carbondale is generally storefront, and the way that Zone District Regulation is written, it's a certain percentage of glass and a height of glass, because it's responding to the, the types of structures that were historically along Main Street, which were, you know, commercial storefronts. So in responding to that, we, um, we've designed a pattern that uses glass block creatively to create a, an idea that sort of mimics that. It, it brings in some of the horizontals that we see along Main Street. We are doing a cornice detail at the top of the building. And in, um, in design collaboration with the Historic Preservation Commission, we actually put more emphasis on the corner entry, and that, um, like making the window wrap the corner and creating a little bit more of a cover there in, in either the fully funded version of the project or the sort of, um, we, we don't get to the fully funded project, we still have this, this corner feature. Um, and the brick itself, it was selected for its, um, sort of match, I'll say, although the brick along Main Street in Carbondale really varies a lot. So that was a, it was a fun project to, to walk along the street and photograph all of the historic buildings and find one that we thought sort of like threaded the needle with it. Um, so we have this glass and brick combination, um, definitely a modern interpretation, but trying to do something that, that captures the spirit of the historic district. So the, the glass block on the exterior of the building is actually backed up by glass block on the interior in places where we want light to come inside. So these zones here where you're seeing a, a lot of glass, those are actually sort of windows in a way. So they bring natural light into things like changing spaces and office, and then of course, this is the ticket window, which is doing that sort of corner entry. Um, so that's, this is if we reach, if we, if we exceed fundraising expectations, we have this full trellis option. And then if we are just doing the base project, there's still a, um, a feature at the entry, and we're still recognizing that corner especially. The idea for this is, um, is also to use our 1% for the arts funding for this treatment of the facade, and the way that, that code section is written, it is intended to be not just, um, like place a sculpture in front of a building, but work with the building for artistic treatments, so that, um, in collaboration with the Carbondale Public Arts Commission and Carbondale Arts, and of course, there are a lot of overlap between, you know, the actual humans on those two boards. Um, they, we came up with this idea that, we're, we're pleased with it so far. The, um, the height of the parapet blocks all of the equipment from across the street, which is in compliance with the Zone District Regulation for, for blocking that equipment, which is electric heat pumps. This is an all-electric facility. So some of the sustainability features, um, exceed code, which is not necessarily a, a land use issue, but I'm actually gonna just touch on a couple of the great things here. Um, this is gonna be one of the few all-electric pools in the state. We are using backwash from the pool water systems as landscape irrigation. We're exceeding code requirements for insulation. We have all low-flow plumbing fixtures and high-efficiency light fixtures. There are, are sensors and controls on all of the systems so that we can, um, reduce energy use wherever we can. We have a high-efficiency split heat pump system for the building, um, conditioning and keep on hot water. Um, the base PV system in the, in the base project is a 15 kilowatt system. If we get to do the full trellis, that will be a 70 kilowatt system. It's a significant offset if we get to do the full, the, the full system, but it, it will still be something like 50% of the energy use, because pools are really, really big energy users. Throughout the process, um, we came to the conclusion that an extended season was appropriate, not, you know, running it through the winter. So there's a, maybe someday, and this could be net zero in terms of, of that. We are, um, we're not able to get there today with current surroundings. Um, and I am back at the, the main overview slide. I do feel like I stopped really fast, sorry. Um, but thank you, and, um, if there are any questions, please let me know.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation. Fair time questions for now, before we overlook the public and then have our new deliberations.
I have a question. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I, can you go over the fencing again? Um, the alternative, I would think that was the alternative fencing.
So on the right center part of your screen, there's a little bit of a nicer fence, so there are these pickets. Um, so it's not a chain link fence along Main Street. And that's just for this little corner here, Christina, where, um, it's sort of the public plaza at the corner of Seventh and Main, where we're trying not to put a chain link
Yeah.
um, material, but we are doing that in between the facility and the park. More for budget reasons than anything else. It would be a significant fence line item. But in order to make that fence that is along the park have as minimal impact as we can, we're just doing a, a treatment of it where they, it's like a coated, so it's, it's not that galvanized aluminum chain link fence. It'll be dark green.
Okay. Thank you. Sure.
Two quick questions. One, is there, um, easy one first, for the glass, for the glass bricks, are they, wherever we see, wherever we see glass bricks on the exterior, some will be glass, will some will be 100% or both will pass through, or, or all, all the glass bricks seem from the outside. Particularly, uh, uh, available for illumination from the other side.
Right. I have a drawing.
We're looking in reverse.
I have a drawing that I kind of skipped through that is, um, gonna help with this for us. So do you see these dashed squares?
Yeah, that's, that's solid.
No, behind those is where it's actually really a window to the inside. So this is a window into the men's changing room. This is a window into the women's changing room. So like, there's another, there's a, a second layer of glass block behind it, so there's two layers of frosted glass block. Um, and then this is the mechanical room.
The, the renderings, the evening renderings, if I'm correct, show sort of this whole mosaic of backlight stuff. It won't, that, that, that's not possible, because, because it, the only things that would be possible to backlight light in three head effect are where those windows are, so we have this, like, blocks of light, not a, not a really cool backlight thing as a show.
In the wall section, there's actually a light strip that would cast light into that cavity
Okay.
in between the concrete block wall and the, the sidewall. So it's not as you're, exactly as you're concerned about. Um, but the amount of like, how much glow we can get, like, and how far we can cast it into that cavity is like a little bit of an imperfect sense, but we are trying to light the cavity behind those glass blocks with a, like, an LED strip that's intended to be throwing light there.
It, it seems like a lot of work to figure that out, right? I mean, it's, it's a cool, the, the renders look amazing. Um, and, and it could be a really neat feature, and I could see that being, being something that really is art, sort of art-forward and, and daring architecturally. And, and I might, I was, I was, I just wanted to look at it. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that what we're, what we're showing is, is what we're capable of.
Yeah, I think you're on to like, the exact effect of that is hard to see. But it's more than like three dots, yeah, that, that'd be sweet.
Uh, and then second question was, is there, I, because I know there've been multiple iterations, multiple budget analysis, is there a, um, in, in the, in the original, uh, bonding issue, uh, the master plan, the, I'm sorry, the, uh, the master plan with which you began, called for a three-lane pool. Is there a bit of three-lane, uh, lap, lap pool? Um, is, has, is there a, is there a number of, of budget analysis of the cost of going from three lanes to six? Or three lanes without a deep end, um, to six with a deep end? And what that delta is, as they would say.
Yeah, um, so we had a cost per lap. The, and then I can come back to, um, maybe Taylor in the background, you could try and.
Yeah, I'm gonna dig a little bit. I don't know if that's gonna be a quick answer.
The jump from three to six was targeting, um, being able to use it for competition, right? So like, it's coming from requests of users, design advisory group, and some understanding that perhaps the master plan had not listened to that request at the time. Like, that was one of the early meetings we had, was like, these are some things about the master plan that we, we think they got it wrong from what the, from what the original requests were, and that, that's hard for me to assess, right? I'm an architect now, and I'm like, okay, I'm gonna take that information and, and move forward, um.
Andy, I, I think I'd throw one more thing in there, too, the, it really expanded the pro, the ability for staff to program that body of water with the diving board.
The rec pool, um, going to have a deep end is radically more expensive, because it had to get so long to go from like the toddler depth at the, at the rec ramp height that you can get to a deep end. So it's cheaper to do the deep end in the lap pool than it is to do it in the other pool, which is why that's where it ended up. Um, so there's like, but the cost per lap lane, Dave or Taylor, it's like something around a hundred grand, like, it's like, it's it, or like slightly over a hundred grand for, for lap lane, like, it's, it's even again.
And that, and then the cost to, to take that additional square footage and do, what, 60 feet further to accommodate, but the,
The deep end.
For the deep end, yeah.
Yeah. So, oh, that I don't have, I don't have that off the top of my head, but that's why I might have been wrong about that other figure. I can actually like totally get a fine point on that and email you guys afterwards, but maybe somebody else on this phone knows.
Well, I mean, I might just jump in, so those are a lot of decisions that have been made, and so we're looking at the plan as it is. And that, as Andy said, the challenge was, there was always a vision to be a deep end, and that was sort of, we had this aha through the design process that putting it in the lap pool, because you're starting out at five feet deep, going to 10 or 12, is the only way to do it logistically, rather than going from like one foot to 10 or 12.
We are, we are talking about changing the zoning from, from park and significantly increasing the, uh, impermeable square footage. And so I think, to the extent that people love the park, which is, you know, which is true, um, discussions of whether or not going from three, which was what was in the, 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 we, we, all we have information available to folks, um, when they, when they notice the bond to six is a, is a a, a reasonable point of, of discussion, um, within, within deciding a, a big change.
I have to say that, like, Andy's not in a position to go through a budget analysis with this.
That was, that was a simple question as to, as to if there was a cost there, if not, that we do.
Whoa. I, I don't know if anybody else has more on that, but the, uh, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we can keep it. This, this is all background information that we, we've been through. Christina, can I clarify, when you asked about the fence and you mentioned alternative, were you trying to clarify what the fence requirement is in the code and what the difference is?
Yeah.
Do you, Jared or?
That's thank you for clarifying. Oh, sorry. No, 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 you were fine. You were perfect.
So, so the fence requirements that we have in, in, um, this zone district is a maximum four to two-inch tall fence in the front yard, so that's from the property line to the front yard setback. Um, in order to meet the pool code requirements, where the building is located, a fence would have to be located within that front yard area. And so, um, to, to meet those building codes, it would have to exceed that 42-inch maximum requirement. And so our code does allow that, instead of receiving a variance for that, we can receive an alternative compliance request, which is basically says, we are, um, considering this alternative design
Mm-hmm.
um, as opposed to, um, strict, uh, application of the code, because the alternative design results in something that meets the intent of that code section, but also achieves it to a greater degree, which is other aspects to a greater degree. And so that's kind of what the alternative compliance is for. So hopefully it gives you a little context as well.
Yeah, I, I appreciate. Yeah, I appreciate that. And you, you explained it fine. So that's great. And thanks for clarifying that, because that's, yeah.
Thank you. Um, Jess, or Eric, any other, just do you clarify any questions before we open the public hearing?
So real minor one, um, on that sidewalk that goes over to the. ADA parking space, is that envisioned as like a fully curved and engineered edge to that street or? Um, what's the level of that?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I would prefer it to be a wider path. It could be five, five feet, like two people kind of like walk side by side. If I could give up the curb and keep, make the path, they couldn't do that. Um, but uh, yeah, I guess I'm, I guess I'm a little bit hesitant, yeah, I. About the uh, hardening of the whole corner around to the park. Um. I, I, I just feel like trying to make that feel, trying to step that down in tone, I guess. From a lot of curve and gutter construction kind of stuff that sort of defines Main Street towards like, when you get to the park, you're at, there's no more. Curves or parking is not defined really or, and make that transition, I feel like is kind of. Can be true. I guess I don't think that's really like a request as much as just like a request.
It. It is, right now it's a sidewalk and curb. That's what I'm proposing. To answer the question.
Um, yeah. I don't love that, but.
It, it came, that was a request of town staff.
Yeah, that was, and I think it was really to include mobility. Um, we have an ADA parking space and we want to ensure that we have a ADA compliant pathway to the entrance of the building. So that we can comply with ADA requirements. And so um, we, we did look at that. We did work with. The applicant, as um, Andy alluded to, a previous iteration of the set plan included a parallel parking space. Um, along Seventh Street, but there were challenges with that with. Um, ADA accessibility out of that parking space onto the sidewalk. But um. Yeah, Pu- Public Works has requested that that be kind of a traditional sidewalk. Um, continuing the application on Main Street around to that ADA parking space. Um, we can certainly, you know, consider what the implications could be of um, widening that a little bit. Um, and making it a wider attached sidewalk.
I mean, I think an extra foot would be, a sidewalk for two can actually stand side by side is important to me oftentimes. Um, I don't, I think that narrow sidewalks are not that useful actually, um, or ADA accessible really. Um. And they, and again, same time, I see, feel like we did a pretty successful job on Third Street. Where we kind of designed a streetscape that felt somewhere in between being like a total curve and gutter situation and the, and the. And having no sidewalk at all or whatever, but like those sort of flat, flattened curves and things where there's less of a sense of like. Cause I find that the curves are always an anti-accessible thing almost wherever I encounter them, whether I'm just on my bike or somebody on a wheelchair. I, I find that most of the time, especially this when you're not dealing with a high speed car situation where you're trying to actually like stop somebody from driving. Onto the sidewalk, which I don't think you have a huge issue here. Like, I don't know. So I, maybe this is just being smilling here.
Yeah, well, I think we can relax. I don't think the idea of make that sidewalk as useful as possible is valid and we can see that if something will change as a condition. Jess, any questions?
Yeah, just looking at the utilities and the three-phase electrical transformer. How much bigger is that transformer than what's currently there? And is there any plan for screening of the transformer and the trash and recycling? What does that look like? Is that the um, chain link or?
So you know when they do the fabric on the chain link fence, and so that's what's planned around most of that area. And then part of it is actually um, a terracotta colored concrete block for the part that's storage. So any like. Palette of chemicals that comes in for the pool is actually in a, like enclosed little storage shed out there. But the, the trash and recycling and transformer are behind, are behind that kind of like green fabric on the fence.
I would just make a comment, but there might be a nicer way to scream that, especially because it's. Almost at the corner of Seventh and Main and it's also essentially at the entrance of the pool.
Yeah, we um. There was a lot of heartache over where that could be and it just like couldn't work on the other side of the building. Yeah.
Yeah, I understand site constraints completely. I just think that if we're gonna spend money on screaming.
Thing of it, like there's that little, um, they're not focused in these renderings, but they do, we do actually show them honestly. Um. I uh. So we would all put that down as a comment. Yeah, just with the um, our learning transformers.
Let's make it so that it's not a giant transformer at the entrance of the wall.
Okay, I have one small, small question. Um, and the, the Forest Service, I mentioned that they, they would keep the. They would keep the hole in their fence in the, I, when it was. In the spot by, they go to their, the corner, they go to their parking lot. Uh, that, that is a real common way to access Silver's Park from Main Street. In the our current, the current proposal in this design, is there room? Or do we take, do we go corner to corner, uh, upper right of that screen? So right now, if you're coming from Seventh Street, you, you can go across, you can go, go right across the, there and, and then you'd end up, and you could go to their parking lot and go to Main Street. It's a shortcut, but I think one thing that makes our deal so wonderful is all of our little shortcuts.
This, this little, so that path. It's not showing up on here and I'm just trying to figure out like where exactly, this is the um, Miners Memorial. So currently is that path like on this side of that or this?
It's about where there's, there's, there's doors of the occasional.
It looks like that's a, that's a good thing for follow-up to coordinate to make sure that path is still here.
I would love it.
I think it might move a little bit, right?
Thanks, thanks to McDonald's, whatever it says. Um.
I think, I think, no, I love that path too. I think, I think it, I, but I feel like it needs to move a little bit south to work in, in terms of where the senses.
Um, whatever can be done to kind of keep that, that would be great. I mean, I, I guess the larger, larger issue there is just like an opportunity to. To really create another entryway to the park from, from, I think we missed it, but I think it was an opportunity, there was an opportunity to create another entryway to the park from Main Street. And right now, but a, a defined entry, um, as much as I like the back, those, those little backdoor places, it's, it's also. It'd be nice to have, to not make someone kind of unknowing having to go under fifty degrees or something.
Okay. Um, let's open the public hearing. So if any members of the public are here and would like to speak on this, please place the podium one at a time. Um, address your comments to me and then the applicant and the board and staff can respond after all the comments. And uh, please state your name and your community.
I'm, 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 I'm from Garfield, you know, I'm from Bear's Home. I'm coming in, it was way late. It should've been here two years ago. Um, I'm also a new member on the Public Arts Commission. And, and glass block is hard, it kind of raises my eyebrows. And I know. I don't know, it's a little bit of talk to the media. I'm a new member in the media, it's uncommonly late. So I kind of looked at that a little huh? And um. And I'm way late, um, talk about parking. Where do people park and go here? Again, you've had this through, I'm sure. The one that's on, resides on the block away from the park and know when there's an event there. Garfield Avenue is a parking lot. It's not a street anymore. Um. We keep adding stuff and curving though, we don't have a parking. And I know the term used towards people walking and biking and I, I want to do that. Most of my children are lying in the town, but not everyone does. People. We're hoping in the future you recognize me for parking. Like White House Pizza got expanded a bunch of years ago. And like parking got cut downs and the parking is now imperfect. And down on Main Street, yeah, just affects the neighborhoods a lot. But it looks cool, it looks great. I can't wait to see it. Um, it'll be nice to see the new Forest Service building. And this conversation, but in the purpose of tonight's meeting, I'm probably favorite, we don't even know. But I'm gonna be able to hit it real long and then ask you at nine. Thank you.
All right, uh, the public, go ahead.
Can I just make a quick comment then please?
Yeah.
Um, Dan, when you come up, would you just speak up because people online are having a hard time hearing that microphone?
Oh, okay. I'm Daniel, six eight two, you put, uh, one, uh, Jerry brought up, I like the idea of the clayproof blocks along Main Street. There's, um, this problem with the Austrian pine on the main. It may cost us more to protect the root system of that tree than it will be to remove and replant. With the building being placed where it is and with the sidewalk and all the construction going on there. There should be a strong. That's a great tree to say. I'm not, I'm not saying that. Um, the other thing is. The Siberian elm on site, that tree's got to go. It's a base of species. No Siberian elm has been knowingly planted in the town of Carbondale in over sixty years. It's a, and it's planted in the wrong place. The town did not approve that tree being planted where it is. Um. And the tree is on the edge of being considered a hazard tree for this town. That tree and all the Siberian elms in town take up the majority of the town's budget for tree meetings. Uh, the, the tree, I feel from what Amy, Amy showed in that drawing, really interferes with that continuous sidewalk. It already interferes with the sidewalk that's there. We missed our chance about five years ago on removing that tree, when the tree that was adjacent to it was interfering with the ditch that ran underneath Seventh Street. Um, it was, we approved the tree board, approved the removal of that one tree. We should've insisted that the other one go at the same time. And we wouldn't be having this conversation. It does give us an opportunity on the positive side to replant along there with trees that are more in line. With the future of trees and carbon there. Amy does not need, need to make any excuse about removing those trees along that fence line. Those trees planted themselves. They were planted and we've been trying to figure out how to get rid of those trees for twenty, thirty years. Uh, that's about it. Except for that, that tree is the wrong tree in one's.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Moss? Yeah. Brendan Moss, Seven Eleven Garfield Avenue. I'm the closest neighbor I think to the pool. Um, first I just wanted to say thanks to the um, new trustees, congratulations, especially my neighbor Ross over there. Um, okay, so a few comments on this pool. I'd just like to state for the record that location wise, parking. That's gonna be a tough one. Frank mentioned that. That's gonna be just a tough thing to deal with. And I hope that you guys have considered. Where people are going to park. I know we want everybody on bikes and on, on foot, but uh. Those of us who live in town, it's pretty easy, but for twenty people that live in Missouri Heights or elsewhere, it's gonna be a challenge. Um, I, um, so that's one thing I just wanted to consider is. Is that. Um, I um, appreciate your comments on the electrical box. Um, that we see with every new development in town here, particularly by the roundabout massive electrical boxes. If we could mitigate that, which it sounds like you've addressed, Andy. Um, the more mitigation for that type of thing is the better, in my opinion. Um. Okay, so also on the um, site plan, it did not show that little cutout right there. Um. And, but that is, that is a little indent, a little drop off someone, is that right?
No, uh.
No, that, that's been removed since.
Actually removed that parallel, but I can say it's removed to the sidewalk. It's just.
Okay, so imagine like you're pulling up. To drop off some kids or whatever. People are just gonna stop on Seventh. On a, on Seventh there and just in the street. I have parking spots right across the street. You show it here as developed, as like, as paved. Is that going to be the corner of Seventh and Garfield?
No, there's no, there's not any crisis.
Okay, so. Okay, I'm just, I just wanted to be, wanted to raise those concerns about on Seventh, right in front of Silver's, which is already. Um, can be a pretty congested zone for parking and people just kind of being a little brother down there parking. Um. So I just wanted to address that. Um, or just mention it in terms of uh, maybe you guys can think about that and mitigate. Um. Yeah, those are my concerns and thanks again for doing all of this and doing all this due process. And the building looks beautiful. Um, yeah, that's my comments. Thanks for, all right, thank you.
Anybody else want to just do it?
To the nine, ninety-one field circle, I'm speaking from the AFC point of view. Um, we did raise issues about ADA accessibility.
AFC.
Uh, H family carbon new.
Thank you.
Not American, but all. It's friendly carbon new. Um, and we did raise issues about ADA accessibility to, to this facility. And I thought in the earlier plan, there were also some carcasses for ADA along Main Street. And anyway, I thought I even saw that in the minutes, but I didn't see that.
There's the ability for a um, van space to park on Main Street right in front of the facility and not interact the bus. So like, there's, there's one van spot there and then the, the bus can still pull in to the, to the bus space. So that also exists. It's just not new in the way the one, like I was focusing on the other one because it's like a new sidewalk down Seventh Street to a new space.
Well, just with the cock grid, the color that there are the three, there's van spot and there's two. It is on the southern spark side.
It's just one, right?
Just one. And that's also why we needed a sidewalk in the door. And those are less than our crutches sometimes.
Any other public comments on this application? Anybody online, like, must comment? Um, I will close the public hearing. Um, let's hear from staff or the applicant. I mean, let's talk about parking. I'm sure it was discussed. Um, my understanding is it's based on current use and not a change.
But yes, so our parking regulations don't really discuss a public pool. And so the only um, regulation that really triggers is the office space. And that would require one parking space. Um, and so although there is the reality that people will drive here. Um, it seems like the majority of the time historically, those um, parking has been achieved with the parking along Seventh. Adjacent to Silver's Park or other parking within kind of the general downtown area. Um, and so we didn't feel that there was necessarily a need to. Add additional parking spaces to the site when um, historical use is kind of largely served the parking needs.
So people are parking on the street as we heard from the neighbors, which can be annoying that it's public driveway and that's kind of absorbing it. That's the idea. Is it, is it absorbing it as at current levels? Because I think we're doubling capacity almost. And it's, and it's like reasonable to think that we're, that, that a bigger pool will also. More than fill up with the number of people who are excited about it as they should be. Um.
Yeah, I, we, we didn't do a parking study. Um, so you know, we, we didn't really feel that was necessary for this application. Um, but certainly one of the findings um, that staff recommended is that the uh. Is that the parking and the streets and um, the overall road network can handle this rezoning in this site plan. Um, but that's certainly been your guys' purview. If you disagree, that's um, something that we can. Address either with conditions or different findings or whatever that might be, but um. You know, or a parking study, you feel that it's necessary for your review.
We can discuss that. I mean, I think the other clarifying question from those comments is about the trees. Um, it sounds like the tree board supports, uh, removing an elm that's on site that isn't slated for removal. Um, I guess my question is like, is there a leeway as you go through this process to take out a tree if it makes sense to take it out? Or is this locked in to, you know, you can only touch the trees that have been?
Yeah, we would defer to the tree board and.
Okay.
Yeah, so if they want that tree removed and the town is willing to remove that tree, the applicant, um, then I don't think we would have issues necessarily with it from a staff level and if we have to approve a, uh, updated site plan. That would be something that we could do at the staff level.
I mean, I'll just say that I, I appreciate the tree board's perspective on this, but, but within the current moment, we've had an Emerald Ash Ford outbreak. We've seen the Forest Service cut down many number of trees. We've seen a large number of developments. I appreciate the idea of try, of trying to get to the ideal trees we want in every location. But I also feel that trying to lessen and mitigate to some degree this impact that these developments relies to some degree on preserving some of the landscape that exists there and trying not to make it feel totally scorched earth in terms of the way that we're developing things. I think that's, so I think there's a, there's a trade off should be made there in terms of that large tree. As, yeah, maybe it is a hazard and maybe we are gonna have to deal with it in five years. But in terms of this thing, we are, you know, at the moment, it's awful but sounding. And then to hear again, to hear, um, questioning the pine tree on the street. Now you're talking about we've suddenly removed in the course of a year every tree from the Christmas tree on the corner all the way to the other end of that block, which I think would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Well, then you get to those little elm trees. You're probably looking at twenty, twenty trees that we've gotten rid of. So I just want to caution, keep some sense of balance in there of like, I think the plan as it is is fine and, and I, and yeah, get rid of the ones that are intertwined with the fence. But I wouldn't go on a, on an inquisition against all, all of the trees just because they're not perfect tree.
I could just add, add to that. Um, the master plan began, uh, went into great detail about, uh, comparing the sites, the, the recreation or a, a site adjacent to the recreation center and, and the Silvers Park site. Um, and, um, in multiple portions of that document, references, um, and I should have written them out, but references mature, the presence of mature trees, uh, windbreak, uh, solar variation, um, less dust and wind. I think maybe I said that, um, in numerous cases and, and pointed to the lack of those things at the recreation center um, as negative characteristics. Um, I think people, to the extent that they, that people wanted this spot. And again, to be clear, that was twenty-five percent of the population, not, and fifty percent opposed. Or fifty percent wanted the recreation center. I know that that's, of course, it's out of the mark, but in this context, uh, it's relevant, I think, to the extent that, that people cherish Silvers Park. I, if, if they were voting on eleven million dollars and removing trees, if we put out, you know, a little bit, and we all know that there's discretion and that sort of thing. But this is a fundamental shift in what was presented, um, on multiple fronts, financial, uh, ecological. Um, I'm all for padding the budget as much as possible, uh, with replanting. I, I would love to see the tree board advocating as much for new planting, um, and, and, and working with the arborist on making a plan for that as soon as possible, um, as much as we are, uh, putting down our, our good old, uh, which, which I, having had a conversation with the arborist too, I can speak to the fact that, that there is, um, while they are weeds, yes, uh, they also grow here really well. We don't know, and, and the old ones need to go, yes, yes, yes. Um, however, we don't know in twenty years, uh, what our climate looks like. And there's something to be said, uh, around the edges of acknowledging trees that planted themselves, um, even if they're a pain in the butt sometimes.
Right, so I leave the tree plant alone. I think it's time for us to just deliberate and move, um, in some reasonable, uh, amount of time to a, a motion.
Yeah, I would like to speak.
Erica, sorry, I can't see you on the screen.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
That's all right. Um, yeah, no, I'm super excited about this project. Um, I really love the design. I love the incorporation of the glass block into meeting those needs to try and make it a facade when really you can't have, you know, storefront windows going into bathrooms and changing rooms and stuff. So I feel like the design team has really, um, stepped up and delivered a project, um, with a super tight budget. Uh, even though we're over a budget, it's what we're able to build with. So, um, I do have the advantage of being on the design advisory group. So I've been, that's why I didn't chime in with questions, because I've been peppering them with questions along the way. So, um, but I, getting to the application at hand, I, um, you know, I think the, um, public facilities zone change makes a ton of sense, particularly with neighboring public facilities. Um, you know, I think it meets all the requirements that we need to consider for, um, general rezoning. So I'm, uh, excited to support this, uh, application.
Thanks, Erica. Um, other thoughts before we move to our motion?
I just think we've made our bed and, and we have to lay in it.
I just wanna say thank you to the design team and staff because I have sat on the other side of that table when a council or a trustee board turns over in the middle of a project. And it is hard to do that as, um, part of the design and planning process happens. And so, um, good job, you guys are doing a great job. And you can tell that there is care and thought put into this project. Um, and I just, I think it's important to recognize that it is a very difficult position to be in because construction takes so long that a lot of times in these public projects, uh, a town council can, can switch over completely multiple times throughout the process. And, um, so I think there's something to be said for standing behind what's, what's happened so far. Um, and sort of making, questioning things when it's appropriate, but also this is the project.
Jess? Um, the two things I have in mind is that were brought up as suggestions. I don't know if somebody makes a motion, if you want to make them, conditions or just suggestions, but it's potentially widening the sidewalk from five to six feet. Um, might be better as a suggestion than a condition because we haven't assessed whether it's possible for it. Um, considering that it's a little over curve, again, as a suggestion probably. And just considering as much screening as possible, um, and the aesthetics of it around the kind of utility and, and trash enclosure area. Any other discussion?
The shortcut.
Oh, yes, and which is, I guess, an offsite issue, right? The, the shortcut to.
It's kind of the Forest Service, yes, is, you know, it's sort of targeted at that.
Yeah, I mean, they said that they would, wherever that, that comes now, I remember that being the one well they drew, uh, and, and it was that they would keep that open so that we could get, you know, the folks on Gargill Avenue and beyond to kind of get, get to town quicker. But it's also a great way to get into the park from, okay, that was, that you're slicing.
But it's, just to be clear, it's not something in the control of this rezoning application. And it's like, as an coordinate.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's see what we can do.
Let's try to work on it.
And can you clarify the parking? Because I think that is really important, but can you clarify whether it's in this purview of zoning?
I mean, we could, we could say, you know, one of the conditions is that, uh, um, you have to find it. But basically that the, um, public network of streets can handle the traffic and impacts. Um, I think the challenge would be if we decided, um, to require some parking, we're giving up park space or we're giving up pool space essentially. Um, you know, it's a tight area. So we're, we've sort of so far decided as we designed this that that's a reasonable trade off. That to distribute the parking as far as it needs to go throughout a network of streets is better than using up more green space, um, for cars. But we could decide to change that.
Does someone who wants to put in the putt putt golf course with maybe the same general layout and use of, use of space? Look at us, they're looking, will say, well, that's, that's how you calculated. I mean, because I think in one of the applications, it said, well, we basically fulfill this requirement. You know, and, and I think clearly we didn't, we're not assuming that the, that two spaces covers the, the parking need. Does, does someone, does some huge applicant look at this and say, well, that's, that's, that's what you guys approved for there? So my putt putt golf course, which I wasted much until we do, um, is, is not, it shouldn't, shouldn't, shouldn't be required to do more, more parking, is that?
So, so I think there's two aspects of that. One, um, the pool is a public facility. Whereas a putt putt golf course would be a private facility. And so I think we would draw the domination there. Um, secondly, um, I'm assuming this new putt putt golf course would be a new addition versus a historical use. And so, um, you know, I think there's a little bit of the distinguished, distinguished extinguishment need to be made there. I'm not sure if that's a word, but.
Can I also add?
Well, so limiting parking for Silvers, for Silvers Park. We're, we're, if, if we are increasing, or if we are not addressing parking for a larger user base, a paying user base, um, then, then those who are trying to use the park for free, uh, are going to be having the park further, further. I think that's a, which I'm concerned, again, that's currently some part.
Erica, did you have something on that?
Well, I was just gonna add that I feel like, um, we've had recent projects that have come forward where as a board, we've been bummed that we've required so much parking for them, um, including the art space project. And I think Chris could chime in on this, um, of just wishing that ours, our, our downtown, you know, zoning requirements for housing, um, didn't require as much parking as what we're required to put in there. And so just putting it in perspective of, um, I mean, I remember this discussion being part of the master plan of acknowledging that, yes, we're gonna use the residential streets. We can improve some of our streets, like we did right across the street at, um, the Painted Pig, where, you know, instead of it being parallel parking, it's now pull in. I don't even, can't think what you call it, pull in parking and created fourteen spaces. Um, so I would be pretty opposed to looking at trying to add parking to this site or in Silvers Park, um, based on our existing sentiments about kind of trying to keep parking to a minimum. A lot of it is to encourage folks to bike and walk and maybe park someplace else downtown and enjoy other things downtown, so.
Can you use the downtown?
Um, any other thoughts on parking? Anybody want to make any changes before a motion's made to the stipulations or findings, conditions? And, um, well, there's a recommended motion on page eight of the plan. Somebody would like to make that motion or a different motion?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go for it.
I move to approve the combined application for rezoning, administrative site plan review and alternative compliance for the Carbondale Aquatic Center at six eighty-four Main Street with the following conditions and findings of fact and direct staff to prepare the necessary approved documents.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So a motion by Erica, a second by Jess. Um, Jessica, let's do a roll call vote, please. And then I will ask if you both know, please cite something that is a condition that's not met. So that, that could potentially meet that condition that we're applying.
Jess Robinson?
Yes. Hi.
Yes, yes, it's fine. Christine Mottmeyer?
Yes.
Russ Krebs?
Um, and I would, I would point to the, um, the no foreseeable negative impacts to adjacent properties, um, whether or not we, uh, address parking or not, there will be adjacent, there will be impacts. And that's, that is easy, that is included in the, and I love the design. Um, I like, I think a lot of really good work has gone into it and I will look forward to assuming, and assuming it stays the way I'm, assuming it will, um, just one minute.
Gotcha, sorry, write down if your comments. Um, Ben Baumhuck?
Yes.
Chris Hassig?
Hi.
Erica Sparhawk?
Yes.
Thank you for that, a lot of work. We have a few votes on this. I don't know if we have any more. I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be.
Yes.
One more on this, uh, purple document, so looking forward to that.
All right, well, thanks everybody for all the time and you did that.
Thank you, Eddie.
Moving right along, we're gonna talk about board priorities and project status update. Um, I'll note that Laura and I started discussing this today. We're, we're not gonna make this a decision-making moment where we set our priorities. It's really just an update and bringing you members up to speed on where we are with some things you committed to. And then we're actually talking today about doing something we haven't done. Might not have been important, maybe it's a kind of an afternoon retreat, um, to really set our priorities for twenty twenty-five as a, as a board before we get into budgets. So we can, we can talk about a day slightly later, but, um, I think this is a great opportunity where I maybe just highlight a few of the key things and then we can have questions and stuff.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, so on the first attachment, the Board of Trustees memorandum with regard to goals and priorities. This is last year's memo. Um, I just sort of tried to update so that you knew what the status of these priorities, goals, agenda items were. Um, much of this is in progress. Very little of it has not been started. Um, and, you know, hopefully, hopefully we'll be finishing some of these things soon. Um, but just to give you an idea what we were talking about last year, we did it the previous year also. It really colors, you know, what the priorities of the board are with regard to what gets budgeted. And, and what, you know, there's never enough money, so where are we aiming the money? Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions with regard to this, but this was really just to get the conversation started. Um, Ben, if you want to talk about it at all, that's great. But, um, it really, uh, this and the other, um, document, which we'll talk about in a minute, the project status report, that's, that's a quarterly report. We would have done this a month ago, but it seemed a little silly to do it like, you know, four days after the election when you weren't sworn in yet. So we pushed it a little bit so that we could give you, again, the best background on what's going on and what the status of these projects is as possible. Um, highlights, I'll just say always affordable housing, right? I did add in here, um, some things that are coming up. You will hear and discuss inclusionary, um, housing requirements pretty shortly, like within the next six to eight weeks. Um, I added expanded employee housing in Carbondale. We are always, always, always trying to figure out how we attract and retain employees. It is very, very difficult as, I'm sure you're all very aware with the cost of living. And, um, there's lots of jobs and nobody wants to really commute an hour one way. Um, and even then, it's a struggle with salaries and what have you. We're always, we're always trying to balance those tensions. Um, the Latino Advisory Board, I'm hoping that one of you will volunteer to work with me. I'm getting that thing going. It did get delayed for a couple of reasons, but most recently it was really delayed because we were managing the newcomers project with the Venezuelans and shelters and things like that, that we just ran out of bandwidth, right? Um, Climate Action Plan is always ongoing communications. We are getting better. We now have, I see I have a typo in here, it's not OIP, it's PIO. Um, and so Anna's been really helpful, um, in trying to brainstorm with me about different ways to communicate with the public, with the board, with staff, et cetera. Um, you'll also hear, uh, you'll have a discussion very shortly with regard to the Chacos Park Master Plan and planning process. Um, there'll probably be a fairly in-depth just discussion next Tuesday, but not an approval, it's a work session anyway, not an approval of the plan. Um, and it'll be up to you how long it takes to really set out the plan. Um, and it'll be up to you how long you take to really set out the plan. But you'll hear from the contractor next week with an initial presentation about what what he has in mind. Um, Emerald Ash Borer, which I don't know who mentioned that, was it you, Russ? Um, but Chris, it's it's problem, it's going to be a problem for a while. That's going to be a sort of a long term. Ongoing process. Um, First Last Mile, we just got notification that the. Application is open for First Last Mile funding for both Bike Share through Recycle and the Downtowner Service. For next year's budget. Um, we do plan to have our pilot start the beginning of July with with regard to the Downtowner and you will hear a lot more about that. Um, Town Center Project is continuing. Um, that will also be on here for quite some time. Um, right now, we're just trying to go after money. Um, with our, uh, consultant, um. Art Space and myself and our architect are briefing, uh, Chaffa on Friday. Um, the mobility process, the mobility plan, map Carbondale is also in process. That will probably go through the summer. Um, building an energy code adoption, if, uh. If we could carve out another twenty or thirty hours in the week, probably we'd get it done pretty quickly. Aaron's working on it. Um, and I have told him if he needs to hire a part-time person consultant to help us get that done. To go ahead and do it. So we're talking through that. Um, the path to net zero for new construction in existing buildings, we work with Clear on that. Um. It's never going to be done because it's kind of kind of a constantly moving target. Um, but the board did pass, um, some plans for the path to net zero last year. Um, whether those get altered or manipulated at all based on circumstances and situations will remain to be seen. Eighth Street Project Phase Two, we are doing a lot of that in-house because, just like the pool. The sidewalks, the bump outs, the crosswalks, et cetera. We did one side of the street. We were supposed to do the other side of the street. This year, uh, when we went out to bid for it, we added thirty percent. Knowing that inflation would be a big factor and it came in, I don't remember, fifty or sixty percent higher. So we, um, the board made a decision, um, based on the recommendation of Public Works. The Public Works would try to do some of that work themselves and they have done the bump out at Eighth and Merrill. And they're working on the crosswalks and if they have to then hire somebody to finish certain parts of it, they will. Um, Industry Way Roundabout, that's, it says in Planning and Engineering, you'll see it on the project status as well. That's not our planning, that's engineer, our engineer and C dot planning. Um, and that is something that our Public Works Director Kevin is basically honchoing and that's really a long-term. Project, long-term and very expensive. So we'll be talking more about that, but I imagine probably not much. Before map Carbondale, uh, recommendations come in. Um, ongoing and future projects, there's always UDC zoning amendments. Based on the comprehensive plan, based on the board's priorities about affordable housing. That's just sort of an ongoing process. Um, I already talked about the employee salary and benefits review. Um. Maintenance and energy upgrades for town of Carbondale buildings. That's everything from a capital needs. Survey to our plans to electrify this building. Um. Short-term rental platform and enforcement strategies, um, and I put that as. Including, does the board want to make any changes to the regulations, et cetera? Um, Mayor and I talked about that this morning. We'll probably do an update of that in July sometime. Um, and invite. Property managers and anyone who has a short-term rental or anybody who doesn't want to see any short-term rentals or what have you to join the conversation. Um. The, uh, Police Chief is working on emergency response, um, along with. Kevin Shoresman is on the wildfire mitigation, uh, committee regionally. Um. You know, we're planning for, how do we do EB in our fleet? Um, we have some of it. We got a Ford Lightning truck this year, which, um. Jessica keeps trying to run off with.
I took it to Glenwood.
Um, and, uh, and we're working to try to find grant funding and figure out what the Thompson House needs. Um, so that we can keep that as a historical asset. Um, so that's really what's on here. The question is, what's not on here? And where are your priorities and have they changed from from where we are? So we'll probably, I imagine, talk about this a couple of times in the next. You know, month or so and then, you know, as Mayor said, potentially have a, a, you know. Good chunk of time as a board workshop to really hammer this out a little bit more. Um, and that will probably run all the way pretty much through the summer so that we're prepared for budget. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that's just a great topic. If you want to ask questions about any of those and if they're really detailed, we can follow up afterwards. Um, but any, you know, further information that you'd like. Um, or is there anything kind of glaringly missing right now? Um, you know, we do, part of our role is to work with our town manager and manage the workload of staff. And so we, you know, then we send Jared off on a planning exercise to figure out inclusionary zoning, we can't then say, and we want. A parking study and ADUs and this and this, which we're tempted to do sometimes because the things all feel urgent.
Well, I think I'm getting pretty good at saying, please don't do that right now.
But any, um, any questions on any of these for now or any kind of big shifts?
That's a great list. It'd be nice to communicate. I know it's maybe more than we normally include in our newsletter, but on some level, I think. No, if there's a way to put that in in public forums that people know the things that are on our radar, I just think what we can do to. Put, put, put stuff out there. I think the more you're going to get buy-in for our lists of subscribers.
Good idea.
That's a great idea. We could even if we, as we develop a list for next year, you know, maybe we publish it. So here's kind of our work plan of the year and every. Newsletter is kind of a status update, you know, the checks moving across the.
Well, and it may very well be that in, uh, when we talk about it in June or what have you, we really invite the public to come and talk about it and hear what.
Yeah.
What's being talked about.
Yeah, I was going to say, um, and I agree with what Erica said about parking, but I'm also a futurist person. I like to look at the future and. It's inevitable that we're gonna, especially even that pool is amazing. We're going to get people coming and I know we want to encourage walking, um, but I do also think that parking is huge. Um, so I I just feel like, I again, I know, I know our priority is that people are walking, get people riding their bikes. But I also see that there is still going to be parking issues. So I just feel like, again, um, we, we, we really got to talk about it. Um, I hear a lot about that in the community too, especially the Latino community as well. So I just want to bring that up. Um, so. Parking, again, I know we want to, we, we, we want to make sure that we are walking and biking. But I also feel parking is going to be something to talk about.
And if Jared was still here, we've had a lot of conversations about this recently. Um, particularly with, you know, what's the future of the lot across the street? Um, you know, the dirt lot that's right across the street right now, especially once Town Center gets built. Um, and then over by Granada Panini, there's also a plan for development there. And so little by little, it's going to just get more and more concentrated. So, um, I think that's a good idea. To have, at least as a conversation.
Yeah, might be.
Mm-hmm.
Or, um, I I vouch as to Ben, um, if I am part of that, I think Advisory Board, that's maybe something that we could bring up. On that voice of where we're missing parking, um, challenges, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll just start by saying I agree with Laura that the parking, a lot of it does hinge on this lawn next door. That's kind of been our default plan. Obviously, I think we should keep our eyes open for other opportunities if there are some to, I mean. Ideally, we could be able to secure parking across from the launch pad or something like that, but, um. I don't, yeah, I don't know that we're going to get anywhere. I do think there are other things that maybe. I think we have a long, we do have some sort of long game we can work on, but I don't know that we need to go paving that lot soon. Um. On the, um, the Downtowner thing, I just really hope we have a focus on data collection and really, really, really trying to. Analyze that thing as as effectively as we possibly can because it is a pilot and it's a really expensive thing for our budget. And I just want us to come out of that with a lot of information that actually is useful that can help us make a real reasoned decision about. Are we going to have whatever that is half a million bucks for our budget to accommodate this? Um, and, uh, I want us to be able to say, yes, this is everybody's, you know, whatever. This is where we need to tweak this thing or something or whatever. Um, and then on the the roundabout, um, I've been hearing from the age-friendly Carbondale and Bike Ped. That I think there's a lot of appetite for trying to figure out. Can we design this thing and figure out as they're phasing where there can be a, a pedestrian portion of it that can be built first? Like, as people are, the age-friendly people are pretty mad feeling like. We're going through plans and plans and plans and the roundabout is supposedly been in engineering for a year or two or who knows? And, um, they want to see. They want to see something happen. And I do think there is a pretty significant safety issue out there right now with jaywalking right in that. And while I don't agree with the idea of moving the roundabout from industry place, I totally disagree with that. I do think there is a room for a really major. Pedestrian crossing between that roundabout and Islanic that could really handle a lot of that. Could sort of candle both of those intersections essentially, but is more focused on pedestrian side of it and really. I mean, that's where the Bike Ped as well has been pushing on the map is really trying to think in a networked way about. How are people moving in bikes and what's the desire lines and things like that? And hopefully there'll be some backup from that as well. Or like for grants and stuff. I think that's pretty much it, um, for me, except for just, I mean, obviously on the housing front. Um. Uh, I'd love to see us, I don't know, I think that's just the coalition's thing, but I want to see a buydown happen.
Yeah.
Um.
They are getting more money for that.
See, I would like a discussion. I mean, this maybe needs to be discussed with Christie about what's her bandwidth. We've put her through a lot of, she's put herself through a lot of also. I do great ideas that have garnered a lot of money, but. Um, just trying to figure out more income streams for our, because our, we just have the tiniest housing fund and. If we actually had a couple more diversified sources of income to that, that were little trickles coming into that thing every year, I think it could. You can obviously bond off of it and we can leverage it a lot more. Um, if it's actually, if it's more than just the shit to grapple tax. And I mentioned the storage unit thing. I don't know. People have appetite for that. That's maybe another year out, but. To me, that seems like a pretty low hanging fruit to me of something that they're not really contributing sales tax, using a lot of ground in town. And we've already created the template for it essentially in the development agreement. That's been put in place over there at the Transformer in terms of like, we have a collection. Happening there that could conceivably be extended as sort of a, as a flat thing to all, all of these businesses in town. So that's, that's what I, I don't know what you, who I've responded to.
No, I was just going to make sure that you remembered that, um, one of the things in the development agreement. With the storage that's out on one thirty-three is that they are contributing two percent of their profits to the town, but it's going to the arts.
Yeah, and so I, I'm sort of sorry to feel like, I don't, I don't want to target that thing in particular, but I feel like the entire sector has become. Quite prominent in our town.
Yeah.
And is using a lot of, um, people are driving obviously all their materials on our streets and all this stuff. And I don't know that these are actually generating the sales tax per sale. It's not much. So they're not really punching their weight in terms of the impact. And I feel like. Citizenry would be open conceivably to, to putting another one percent or whatever on that, on all these things to just put another. Stream into the, into the bucket. Um, so that's, that's one thing, but I, but I, yeah, so I think we should have a talk about tax. Stuff.
Yeah.
And Brett, we also talked about Brett, do we want to try to anticipate? Some sort of movement at the state level or even try to push it to some degree by saying, hey, we've. Our citizens have gone and said we would accept this thing if the rules can be changed at the higher levels. That's often.
All good ideas. Anything else, questions or comments on the board or the project list? Yeah?
I just wanted to point out that, um. On the potential new item priorities, we've had this need for expanded employee housing in Carbondale. But then the ADU priority has been moved down because of the state, so. I just think that ADUs are a very efficient way to house employees in Carbondale. And any efforts to make those more affordable, easy to approve in the town. Is it is a really easy way to create housing? Um, and easy is a relative term.
Yeah.
And.
And Jess, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this isn't, is intended to refer to town employees. We have seven units right now. We've, hopefully we'll have three more when Town Center comes up. But we regularly lose people because they have a hard time finding housing here. So that, that, in case that was not clear, I just want you to know. Yeah. Okay.
Thing has been slowly, I mean, obviously there are busy things here, it's back up the way, but it is grinding along somewhere.
We're waiting. The state is making all kinds of changes and we don't want to do something that they're going to just undo. So you'll see on the project list that it's a little bit on hold.
I just want to add two things just there on the list. Um, one would be, uh, I mentioned earlier, really focusing on replanting. Given the number, just a real check in with, with what we need to do to expedite the, the planting of new trees. Um, where we're losing them, I think completely, the board will get in there. Okay, well, but, but really focus on, on, and if we need to put more money to that effort, we can, we can do that, um, and sure. Um, and then, uh. One, one, one idea that I've had that I'd like to at least throw out there at some point is the idea of. A, a, a trial run of a full-time grant writer to the town. It seems, I wanted to make sure, you mentioned Eric's. Winning grant writing, um, for half a million bucks and that's, that's wonderful. Um, I just wonder whether maybe. Given the the picturesqueness of our team, the fact that we have had some success with these grants, that if there were someone whose job. It was to really look, look at those or help others with them. Um, it might be something that would, you know, would easily paper. Could, could potentially easily paper itself, um, or be self-outing if it didn't.
We do have a grant writer, um, that is specifically working on pool grants right now. Um, he's not full-time, obviously. It's a little hard to get a full-time grant writer because most of them are contractors, but. Um.
Yeah, but something you just talked about.
Yeah, we had, we put, I think, I think it's twenty thousand dollars this year for grant writers. Um, and, and it's always a fine balance because if you get the grant, you also have to manage the grant. Right? Yeah, yeah. No, but, but that's been on here several times.
For sure.
I've noted all these as things, I think that these are all really good topics in the tree. I didn't hear anything that's like. Gradually, we'll turn in a different direction for now, so we'll keep working on our current projects, but I think that this is already a lot of really good food for thought as we start to plan. Okay, can we move on?
Yes.
Right.
So the next document is the ongoing Carbondale Projects for the board update. This is that quarterly report that we do. This was updated as of the eighth of May. Um, and, um. It's a, it's a lot of writing. I don't really think you want me to go through every single section, but if there's a section that you want to pick out and talk about. I'm happy to do that. Um.
I think a lot of the, there's a lot of overlap between the two.
Mm-hmm. And anything that's complete, I did put in bold, so the next time those will, those will come off. Like the sewer line replacement on Crystal Circle and those kinds of things.
I encourage everybody to go down to the Walk Riverfront Park in, in RVR, Crystal Bridge, it's so great.
Yeah, it's really beautiful.
Walk through the, the fence area, you know, little, little narrow lanes through to keep you out of the revegetation zones, but.
Um, it's, it's a lot to be proud of and it's a lot of.
It's, it's a lot to be proud of, and it's a lot of riverfronts that we've just have come up.
I think Ross made a good point in conversation at some point about, that I think we could conceivably. Consider this, I, I just was about, about the sign, this new bilingual signage for parks. I think it's really exciting, but. About, yeah, trying to make sure that that's actually spread to some of the other parks in town that people don't even know are parks necessarily. One example would be at the River Park there. I'm sure there's signage planned there, but we try to reinforce that they're welcome, that everyone is welcome. These places and. And that, yeah, especially in River Valley Ranch, sometimes there's that misunderstanding about what's private, public and. That, that is, that is in town, that town people are allowed to go to those parks. And they should, they should be, feel welcome there. So just let they keep going with the bilingual thing and try to use that as an opportunity also.
Well, and this wasn't never intended to be, to be the, the project, but we just can't do it all at once. And it, and they really started with. You know, the signage is going to be different in a park that allows dogs than a park that doesn't allow dogs. So they really started with the parks that allow dogs.
Thank you for the updates.
Thank you.
Last item is board and commission assignments. Thanks. I think I heard from pretty much everybody. On desires and interests, and so I've kind of sketched out a, a proposal. That I'd love to just kind of go down the list and see if this sounds good, so. Chris, I'm leaving you alone if you're okay with that. You can get department boards and commissions unless there's one that you'd like to shift into or out of.
Unless somebody really feels like they want to be part of the Garfield County of legitimacy communication.
Is that still going or?
It is.
We went down there, I've been down there only twice, and at both times it's like a twenty minutes long meeting and.
I mean, that kind of feels like.
We don't have a trustee position on there every year, so I'm not even sure we have a position on their board this year. I will check.
I, I think, and yeah, I think it, Kirk would like some allies to some degree on that. It's very Western Garfield County Center, and they sort of started with these resources in terms of. So it is sort of an important thing to try to keep our foot in the door there and not just.
I think we might not have a trustee position anyway this year.
Be prohibited to our. So I don't think they give some.
I mean, I wonder if a good next step is for Kirk to let us know if it feels like he would.
I already asked him to check.
I'm happy to keep, but I would appreciate if he would sort of reach out. I mean, it happens every month, but it's really. And it's a huge position to go away to rifle for fifteen-minute.
Communications with no communication.
So I think, yeah, Chris is probably gonna stay on those two, then Bike Ped Trails and Environmental Board. And Colin's gonna stay on RAFTA and Housing Coalition, and so it might be easier for me to just go kind of person by person. And then this is totally just based on your emails. I'm looking at the grid and we can shift it up right now, so. Erica is gonna probably shift off of Carbondale Chamber and give that to Jess. Jess expressed interest in the chamber, so did Christina, but wait, Christina rather would speak. And Erica would shift on to Park and Rec, which she's been kind of informally serving on to help with some dual business. And then she, the veil, the victims of assistance, that's just the when necessary. It's not really a regular meeting.
That's, that's Erica?
Yeah, so just leave her alone. On the Park and Rec with Chamber. And then Erica's open to staying on Carbondale or Colorado Communities for Climate Action, C C four C A. But she's also open if somebody else wants to jump in there. She said it's a, I'm speaking for you, Erica, so if you want to jump in, feel free. But she said it's a really good opportunity to be involved in state level policymaking. So just think on that as we go. I need to shift off of Garfield Clean Energy. Jess, I've got you penciled in potentially for that as your other kind of main one. If you're interested, we can keep going and we can come back around. Chris, Colin, good as it is, so Jess would be on Chamber, maybe Garfield Clean Energy and maybe D P O X. I don't know how much D P O X Center is meeting right now. Lonnie was our representative on that.
They have a ribbon cutting coming up.
Yeah, they do. And once they're up and running, thinking that's. I'm trying to look at this as like for each room, we're like two that have kind of regular meetings and quite a bit of responsibility and one that's maybe more intermittent. Ross, I've penciled you in for Carbondale Public Guards Commission, if you're interested in that. It sounds like they could really use some leadership and, and support right now. Tree board. And then I've got you penciled in maybe as R W A P. Again, that was one that Lonnie took on and I don't know how I'm saying. How important it is. And then you mentioned Crystal River Wild and Scenic. I think that one's gonna have a short duration. It's gonna have some meetings and then they're gonna be done. That's four, but think on that for a second. I'll keep going and then we'll talk about it. Christine, I've got you penciled in for Third Street Center, and you mentioned wanting to run the Latino Advisory Board, which. That's gonna be the headline because it's from scratch. We have, we have so far failed making that commission work. We passed Revolution, we never got it off the ground. So that'll require a fair amount of effort. So I've just got you on those two for now, but. I had Christina on Third Street Center and Latino Advisory. So let's talk about that. Any of those not feel quite right, feel like too much, feel like not enough, feel like not a good fit, we need swap if you want to do. I just figured this would be easier to talk to someone if they were ever going through each hand and saying, we must get.
I liked it.
I'm happy to be Colin's alternate if he wants.
That would keep one somewhat else on there. We can have an alternate, and we had Heather Henry, that's our lead and Colin.
And we have two elects.
I don't know, and so that's I think what.
Let me find out.
Well, let's find out because maybe we can send a staff member, but it's a big time commitment. For our week plus some subcommittee meetings, and I don't know if Jared has that.
Okay, that sounds like a lot to me too, that actually.
Yeah, I see it come up on my calendar.
Yeah, it's on my calendar too. And I used to go until it was Heather and Colin, and then they didn't need a third person, so.
Well, let's note that Chris might be open to being our, our trustee alternate, and maybe we can have staff in there as well. Any other thoughts, things you want to change around, swap out, get on a roll?
Mayor, I would like to add that the veil board actually needs two plus the manager. So two trustees plus the manager.
And tell us what the, how that board functions, because this is really new.
That's you.
Yes, it's. That is the Victims Assistance Board that has very specified. Things that it can help pay for in the code. It's funded through surcharges for court fees. And so it's not a lot of money every year. Five thousand dollars of that goes to, what's it called? River. Thank you. So it's, I mean, we have like, we budgeted seventy-five hundred dollars this year and we've spent fifty-four hundred dollars already. It can pay for transportation. It can pay for translators if we need them. It can pay for certain kinds of counseling. We don't use it all that often because we do contribute to Garfield County's victims assistance. And we send them, I forget what it is, they bill us every year for, it's, it's based on use.
But as far as the meetings, isn't it just like?
There, it's, I, it hasn't met since I got here, two and a half years. So it's definitely not a big commitment.
Any other thoughts? That feels like a lot, but I'm thinking is that, I think Crystal River Wild and Scenic and WAPA are. I don't think they need a lot. I don't know.
Well, R W A P also, Lonnie had some real thoughts about whether or not we should. Continue in that way, so we should probably talk about that at some point.
They mostly talked about the paying for the inspectors for the invasive mussels on boats. That was like their big thing for years. Did you do that for a while? I wa, I didn't. I just heard about it at these meetings and, yeah, I don't know what they do with invasive mussels. So I don't think that's a heavy.
You manage one.
I just wanted to throw out that I'm happy to help with the Latino Advisory Board.
You all will help. And I could be your backup for those small, the chamber too. If you ever can't be there, like.
Yeah, because. We're supposed to have an alternate. We're supposed to have a real person and then not a real person, but.
Well, let's put Christina as alternate.
I'd like real person.
Because Marty and Erica came often together.
And I, I believe that Eric is also sort of an official tourism council person as well.
Is that part of the chamber? Yeah, it's a.
Christie goes to Tourism Council almost every time. Christie.
Oh, Christie.
I don't think that they have to have a trustee liaison because a trustee liaison sits on that chamber board. I don't think it's part of the dialogue or anything. And they're all in the chain, the Tourism Council also comes too. Yes, so it's all very intertwined.
Let's go with this for now. Let's see, we're always open to shifting things around if it doesn't feel like a good fit or if you're overloaded or. Underloaded. And Jessica, will you take the next steps? Is that what happens next in connecting? Us with our boards, our email list, all that?
With town boards, our official boards and advisory boards and commissions, I'm happy to do that. I don't have a lot of contact information for the rest of these, but I can certainly figure it out.
I do. Yeah, we can, we can tag team it.
Yeah.
That'd be great, so that people know when the meeting ends.
Yeah, and so starting immediately tomorrow morning at some point, I will have our boards and. Commissions, advisory boards and commissions changed over to a new trustee liaison.
We generally shift this around every.
Okay.
And someone getting the information for the D P O X Center.
Yeah. It's out a little ways. It's not tomorrow.
It's soon, it might be next week. Okay, with that, anything else we have to agree? Work session next week, joint work session on planning and designing, a couple other items, school district update.